Go ahead, Kevin. I'll work on getting Chris on the meeting.
Okay. All right. I'd like to call the May 10th, 2021, meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Before I start, Laura, did you start recording?
Yep, you're going. Yep.
Mr. Laflamme. Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. And Ms. Gold, I know that you're up, so maybe you can cover for Mr. Laflamme until he joins in. That's your next on the rotation as an alternate, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, so first up, we have the minute, approval of the minutes from the April 26, 2021 meeting. Have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scrubby Tennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oster. Okay, discussion corrections. I have one quick one. And that's on page two, line 56, just a typo. It says pound, and it should be pond regarding Kells Farm. So at page two, line 56, it's actually pond. Also received an email from Mr. Oster with some corrections. Mr. Oster, you want me to just go ahead and take care of that?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, so on page two, lines 47 through 50, Mr. Oster's comments were meant to be in general nature, not specific to the subdivision. So the correction is, Mr. Oster, strike, ask, sought to confirm that the planning board can generally add a condition to the approval of a subdivision that there can be no further subdivision of any part of the land that is included in the entire parcel of a subdivision. And the planning office has a copy of that, so they can fix that up, but basically do it be more generic, not specific to that subdivision. And also on page four, line 157, line 157, Mr. Oster questioned if the nurse practitioner worked directly for CVS or a private company as part of his query as to the legal structure of the entity that would be providing medical services. So just elaborating on that line 157 for clarification. Is there any other corrections or comments on the minutes from April 26? Can I have a motion to, well, let's show a show of hands, all those in favor of modifying the minutes as I just stated, making a modification of the minutes? Just show your hand. Is anybody opposed to those modifications? Okay, hearing no one opposed, we have modified minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as modified?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, moved by Mr. Scrubby Tennis, and I'll second that to approve the minutes as modified. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes as modified signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no one opposed, we'll approve the minutes as slightly modified, and I'd like to thank the planning office, Ms. Vody, for working on the minutes. Sometimes those aren't so easy, so we appreciate her support. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings tonight. First public hearing being 1380 Van Antwerp Road. This is an application for approval of plot plan for a three lot subdivision. Mr. Henry, would you please read that notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 187-7 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna and the applicable provisions of New York State Town Law, Section 276, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna by video conference on the 10th day of May, 2021, at 7:00 PM to consider an application from Lou and Alina Lisi for a three lot minor subdivision at 1380 Van Antwerp Road in the Town of Niskiuna, tax parcel ID 40.19-248.1. The property is located within the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. A copy of the application for the three lot subdivision will be available for inspection at the town website under the News and Announcement tab, and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. To participate in the public hearing by video conference, a link is available. To join the public hearing by telephone, a phone number is available, 1-725-999-2507, and a PIN number is available. If you are unable to participate electronically or by telephone, but would like to submit a comment to be read during the public hearing, please email your comment to lrobertson@niskiuna.org by 4:00 PM on May 10, 2021. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. Now I'll just make a note that Mr. Laflamme has joined the meeting. And for 1380, the applicant's lead is engineer, or the applicant himself will give us a quick overview. Is that Mr. Plessey?
Yep, I'll do the quick presentation here. Keep it quick. Good evening, Luigi Plessey with ABD Engineers here representing Mr. Lisi. Located, the project is located at 1380 Van Antwerp Road. The parcel is 1.6 acres in total. There is an existing home that sits there on the corner of Van Antwerp Road and McGovern Drive with a driveway for that existing home that loops from Van Antwerp Road all the way to Hilltop Road. We're here tonight to discuss the subdivision. We're looking to subdivide this into three lots. None of the lots are requesting any variances for either of the lots. The existing home known as 1380 will remain, and two new single-family homes will be proposed on Hilltop Road. The existing utilities, water and sewer, will remain for the existing home. New services for water and sewer are proposed for the two new homes on Hilltop Road. The existing driveway for the existing home that's currently on Van Antwerp Road, we have shown on the plan to remove that driveway and a good portion of that driveway, as well as the existing garage that the driveway leads to, that will be removed. And the new curb cut for the existing home has been moved to McGovern Drive, and also shown a new garage closer to the existing home of 1380 Van Antwerp Road. The driveways for the two new single-family homes that are proposed will be off of Hilltop. We've also looked at the drainage. The drainage right now, there's two separate drainage areas. There's a small drainage area that goes to the corner of Hilltop and Van Antwerp, and we're meeting the same peak discharge rates from lot number two, as that's the same drainage area draining to the same spot as it does today. And we're going to propose a rain garden, which will slow the water down and match the peak discharge rate heading to that drainage area. And the second drainage area is actually a catch basin in low point to McGovern Drive. And what we're proposing is we're also proposing another rain guarding. The rain garden for those two lots, the existing 1380 Van Antwerp, as well as Lot 3, drain towards McGovern. And by providing the rain garden, the rain garden that we're proposing on the existing home, 1380 Van Antwerp, actually overcompensates the added drainage or added impervious, I should say, for the three homes that were recently built further east on Hilltop and McGovern Drive. So when we looked at the drainage study here, we know where the pre-development drained to, like I said, in two areas. And when we analyzed after development, we're reducing the peak discharge rates to those two drainage areas of the site. And again, I know we can go back and forth with the previous subdivision that was done by other developer. But, you know, with all of this going on, we've actually overcompensated for this three lot subdivision to take into consideration of some of the impervious from the previous subdivision that I was never in control of. So as an engineer, we're looking at those two areas and the peak discharge rates, and we have provided the calculations and reports showing you that we're not increasing the discharge rates. So other than that, when you do look at just this parcel, these three lots, by removing a big portion of that existing driveway for the existing home, we're actually increasing green space with this new three lot proposal. So with the combination of increasing green space as well as adding these rain gardens to these two properties, will certainly help, you know, hopefully help the board and the public understand where we're coming from on this three lot subdivision where we're not asking for any variances, you know, these three lots are approved by right. So we hope we can get through it, and if there's any questions, you know, regarding the rain gardens or drainage or anything else, you know, I'm here to answer any of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Plessey. And just for information, we will be discussing anything we hear in the project tonight under discussion items. So this is strictly a public hearing, and we'll listen to what the public has to say. So we'll start out with anybody that's online. Please state your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say regarding 1380 Van Antwerp. Do we have anybody online to speak?
Mr. Walsh, this is Ryan Cox. I have a question. Can I just jump in?
Sure.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ryan Cox. I live on 2463 Hilltop Road, which is one of the properties that was developed in the previous subdivision. And Mr. Plessey, just a quick question, what is a rain garden? Can you just kind of explain to me?
Yeah, so a rain garden is a slight depression in the yard where the water will collect to and infiltrate back into the ground. For the most part, it will be a grass area, a mobile area, and, you know, it's really just a graded area within the yard to collect, you know, rooftop rainwater, and then it slowly discharges out.
And there's no sewer or anything like that? It just simply drains into the existing grassy area?
Correct. Yep. And then it'll either infiltrate back into the ground or evaporate out, you know, by the sun, so.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Cox? You all set?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard regarding 1380 Van Antwerp? Comments?
Yes, this is Rebecca Holmes.
Hello. Okay, Ms. Holmes, welcome. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Board. Rebecca Holmes, 1379 Van Antwerp. So you all know how I feel about this project. If I thought that this magnitude of development was good for the neighborhood, I would have done it myself. And guess what? It would have been a major subdivision, and my neighbors would have been appalled. But I actually care about my community. I care about my neighbors' feelings, and I care about preserving that wonderful historic property in a way that balances the changing times. I want to read a portion of a letter written by Cornelia Simmons, who lived on the property 100 years ago. So she writes, "A number of years ago, 15 at least, I met in one of the stores on Upper Union Street, a man who had lived in Niskiuna for many years, and I inquired of him if he knew about how long our house had been built, and he said, quote, 'about 100 years.' But later I found in some old papers I had that at that time it was about 96 years of age. It is an exact replica of the old Brad Street House in North Andover. When we moved to the Van Antwerp house, there were five wells on the place. One was over an old iron sink which stood in the corner of the old kitchen, later a bedroom. Clarifying this last statement, I refer to the pump of the well, not the well itself. One well in the garage, which was drilled for by Mr. Benedict, who told me that he despaired of striking water after days and days of drilling, and was told by the contractor who was doing the work that he would drill one more day free of charge, but would give up if the job, on the job, if no water appeared. Late that afternoon, they struck water. However, it was sulfur water, which was piped into the kitchen of the house and was what we were obliged to use when we first went there. It blackened to the silver, but we found that by using peroxide in the water, the trouble was corrected. Later, at our own expense, we piped the city water to our home from a pipeline which had been extended from the Beavis Hill reservoir to a house at the junction of Van Antwerp and Balltown Roads. Directly back of the house was another well. I think the stone wall built around it was still there when we left. We filled the well with ashes and planted flowers on top. It was located near the pool. The fourth well was near the old tree in the side yard which was struck by lightning. With its old green pump, it added much to the old-time appearance of the place, but it attracted so many people walking along the highway who found it convenient for quenching their thirst, it became a nuisance. And so that one was done away with. In front of the carriage house and near the chicken house was a well, which I think in the olden days was used for watering stock. There was a very large barn at the right of your roadway leading to Hilltop. The beams were of oak and were immense. On one of them, one could faintly trace the lettering, quote, 'built in 1850.' A road contractor, whose name I have forgotten, bought one of the beams for hoisting purposes. We used the barn for a few years as we kept horses and cows, but when it became necessary to make extensive repairs and our pocketbook was not equal to this strain, we had it taken down. An old man who used to call on us every year selling willow baskets told us that in his boyhood he used to work on our farm and that its main produce was potatoes. He said that the potatoes were drawn by horse and wagon to Troy, from which place they were shipped to various places, most of them to New York." The letter goes on, but I'm going to stop there. The letter is another piece of evidence demonstrating the historic nature of this property, and it demonstrates the connection that Cornelia Simmons had, not only with the house, but the outbuildings and the land. She referenced the carriage house. She referenced the tree that was struck by lightning, which, by the way, is still there, but is going to be removed when that new garage is put in, as well as the big black walnut tree. She referenced the flowers she planted in the old well, which, by the way, were still there when I left, but now have been removed. And it demonstrates how even 100 years ago, there was this battle of preservation versus changing times. She made the best decision she could. Save the carriage house, but sacrifice the barn. Change with the times, but don't rape the place. And it demonstrates that, for whatever the reasons, water supply has always been an issue. I stated a few meetings back that the plan to connect to the water main under my current property was going to require an easement, which I did not intend to provide. Then at the last meeting, it was stated that the engineer had relocated the water main to Van Antwerp Road, into the right-of-way, and apparently in an attempt to get around this easement issue. Well, folks, that is quite a feat, not even a backhoe, just a stroke of a pen and a 14-inch diameter water main is relocated to the right-of-way. Well, the town came out again last week and marked the location of the water main. So now it has been marked by electromagnetic detection and also by divining. And guess what? It hasn't moved, still under my property, and they still don't have an easement. And honestly, I'm not sure the town has an easement either. I've looked back over 100 years in the records and can't find it. And if there is one, please give me a copy from my records, including the book and page number where it's recorded. But it doesn't matter if the town has one or doesn't, whether it's recorded or just assumed. Even if they have one, they could not increase the burden on that easement. They could not utilize it for anything other than its original intent. They could not piggyback that easement to serve a third party. All of that is illegal, and it's basic easement law. Private utility easements are not public property. I, as the surveyant estate, retain complete legal authority to regulate access by third parties, period. And I don't know what's going to be said later in this meeting, that I don't know what I'm talking about, that I'm wrong and easement isn't necessary, that the town actually owns that land and it's as good as public property. It's all wrong. Also, I would suggest that the revised drainage analysis be reviewed by a competent TDE. If you want an accurate soil analysis, then do test pits. Also, the post-construction map doesn't take into account the actual sizes and shapes of the three new houses and the actual grading. That is not a post-construction survey, merely a copy of the hypothetical subdivision map from 2017, minus, of course, all the green space that was supposed to remain untouched, and ignoring all the truckloads of fill that were brought in to change the grade. It's too many shortcuts and too many misrepresentations. And that's all I have to say. But Ms. Robertson, I hope that you will read aloud the statement from my 86-year-old neighbor who is not computer savvy. I think you received an email. It was a couple minutes past 4 o'clock, but she needed a few extra minutes to get it just right, and she really wanted you to read it. That's all for me tonight. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Ms. Holmes, and before we go to Laura reading anything, she has received the email. Is there anybody else online would like to speak regarding this public hearing? Nobody? Okay. Laura hearing and board hearing, no one else online to discuss this public hearing?
Hi. Hi, my name is Steve Maloney. I live across the street.
Okay, what's your address, sir?
2452 Hilltop Road. And I just want to state I am opposed to this, and I agree with everything what Mrs. Holmes just said.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maloney. Anybody else online that'd like to speak? Okay, Laura, you have some emails or any letters or emails I'd like to review?
Yeah, I'm just checking because I didn't receive an, I mean, it doesn't matter to me that it's past 4 o'clock. But I didn't receive anything. I was just seeing if it's in my spam. I have four letters. I received a phone call from Janet Rainey of 1218 Hempstead Road, who stated that she was opposed to the subdivision, wanted to make sure that was on record with the planning board. I received an email from Adam Ruder, who was going to try and make the call, but I don't see him. Adam, are you on the line? Okay, so I will go ahead and read his comment now. "To the Planning Board, by now you know that I am not a supporter of the 1380 Van Antwerp Road subdivision. I still believe that the board initially acted appropriately, and I'm disappointed that the town did not appeal the initial court ruling. But that ship has sailed. I am concerned about the speed at which this has moved from sketch plan approval to public hearing, and I fear approval because the answers to the Planning Board's questions around drainage, utility connections, and other questions have been answered in a vague manner, with the applicant taking a trust-me attitude toward any questions raised. The problem with this is that the applicant has given us no reason to trust him. He has repeatedly violated our trust whenever he has an opportunity. He cleared far more of the property than was approved in the sketch plan when he built the three houses directly behind 1380 Van Antwerp Road. He cleared more of the property than he had agreed to clear in the project he is currently building behind Antonio Road. I have been told that he continued clearing trees after an inspection of those properties, skirting oversight. The Planning Board should not continue to trust Mr. Lisi on these projects. I understand that it must make decisions based on the rules and regulations in place, and I don't know if there are considerations for past performance or if there are further sanctions the board or town can apply to bad actors if they are found to be disregarding the plans the board has approved. But if there are considerations along those lines, this is an instance for using them. And if there are not, then I would encourage the Planning Board to consider introducing some regulations in the future. If this project goes forward, I hope the town and the board pay close attention to what Mr. Lisi does on this property and holds him to his word. It is too easy for developers to ignore the desires of the Planning Board with little, if any, consequences, and that is not right. If Mr. Lisi continues to get his projects approved after his bad behavior, then the board has failed, and its approvals and requirements are devalued. Please consider this when deciding whether to approve this subdivision, and at some point in the near future, when you have a chance to consider how to further discourage bad actors from running Rashad over the board's wishes. Thank you, Adam Ruder." The second comment, the third comment I have is from Mary Jane Bielee. And she writes, "I oppose the three lot subdivision at 1380 Van Antwerp Road. This is a beautiful old parcel that represents the character of this town. Enough demolishing. Keep the lovely properties we have." And then the last comment that I received, just give me one second here, is from Ms. Studley, and she writes, "Hello, we are not able to attend tonight's meet, hearing about this three lot subdivision, but would like to comment. We have lived in this neighborhood for over three years now, and we love the diversity of unique and charming houses that line our street. We live on Hilltop Road and walk our dog by this area under discussion every day. The original house on Van Antwerp is absolutely beautiful and full of history. We don't understand why this land surrounding this house should be subdivided to build houses that are not in character with the rest of the street. The two houses built by this contractor previously a few years ago that are right next to this property being discussed are incredibly cookie cutter. Now, so now there will be two more right next to these that bring nothing to the table in relation to the rest of the streets and surrounding areas. We have discussed this with many friends and neighbors, and they all feel the same. What's so wrong with keeping some land and not have to build on every square inch of it? There's so much history in Niskiuna, and to obscure it is really a shame." Maria Studley and Mike Matt D., 2493 Hilltop Road.
You got it, Laura?
Yeah, I just, I just want to check my spam to see if I'm missing a comment. I didn't receive anything at the timeframe that...
Laura?
Yeah.
This is Rebecca again. I just re-mailed you the statement from my 86-year-old neighbor. Hopefully you have it.
Okay, I did get that email. Here it is. Okay. Okay, so her name is Shirley Juston of 2472 Hilltop Road, a resident for 38 years, age 86. And she writes, "I strongly object to further subdividing this property. More new homes will further erode the character and culture of the neighborhood. There's already been enough change. Thank you for your consideration." Yes, thank you for that. And sometimes things can go into my spam.
Okay, well, thank you, Laura. Okay, one more time, is there anybody else online wishing to speak regarding the public hearing? And again, for information, we will pick up, pick up this project under discussions, the first item under discussion tonight. And we'll talk about some of the things that we heard, I'm sure, at that point in time. Last call. Okay, hearing, we're seeing no one else for the public hearing on 1380 Van Antwerp. I'll close that public hearing. Thank you for your comments. And move on to our next public hearing, which is 1330 Balltown Road. That's an application for a special use permit to have dual use, which is retail and medical. Mr. Henry, would you please read that notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 187-7 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna and the applicable provisions of the New York Town Law, Section 276, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna by video conference on the 10th day of May, 2021, at 7:00 PM to consider an application from Kelly Lay for site plan review and special use permit for dual use in the Town of Niskiuna. The property is located within the CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. A copy of the site plan and special use permit application will be available for inspection on the town's website under the News and Announcement tab, and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. To participate in the public hearing by video conference, a link is provided. To join the public hearing by telephone, dial 1-725-999-2507, and enter the following PIN, 325275180. If you are unable to participate electronically or by telephone, but would like to submit a comment to be read during the public hearing, please email your comment to lrobertson@niskiuna.org by 4:00 PM on May 10, 2021. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. And I know we have Mr. Roth online from CVS. Ms. Lay, are you online? Is that you? We have Ms. Lay online also, do you know? You're muted. It's...
We're not, Kevin.
You're still muted. Is that, it's Diane Leahy. It says on someone's picture there, but they're muted. Okay.
I don't believe that's the applicant, Kevin.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Mr. Roth representing CVS to give us a brief overview, and then Laura, maybe you can pull up the picture either before or after Mr. Roth is gone, okay? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. Good evening. I'd like to throw to actually legal support. We have also on the line Diana Ullmoff, who is supporting the application on CVS's behalf. And then I can take any questions and fill in any gaps from there.
Okay. And that might be Diane, Diane there that's having trouble with her audio, looks like. I hate when that happens. It looks like Diane's gonna call Ms. Robertson. She's gonna try to put her on over the phone.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to start while that happens?
Yes, that'd be great, Mr. Roth.
Not a problem. So the brief overview on this particular application regarding the, the special use combined, you know, use permit is for a health hub project for our initiatives for CBS Health. And we're proposing a new minute clinic at this particular location in your town. The proposal has three separate retail health centers inside. The actual health centers themselves are around four-hundred-and-thirty square feet total. But we also have a care concierge and health center in front with a waiting area. That composes about four-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet with a total of eight-hundred-and-ninety-three square feet total for this particular combined use. The retail health center with Minute Clinic and Health Hub does have a limited menu of health services for the town, and that could be anywhere from health screenings to immunizations. We also are doing testing for behavioral health. And we're also proposing expanding some immunization and consultation for our pharmacy services as well. So this particular clinical portfolio that we're offering, potentially if this is approved, would supplement urgent care services in the area and not replace. And it's not a replacement for emergency services. It is more of a, you know, cuts and bruises, physicals for schools. Like I said, immunizations and screenings, blood pressure, diabetes support could also be some of the services we offer. So it really encompasses a lot of services that you can get without having to go to urgent care or without having to go to your primary. So we're trying to offer a much more convenient health offering for your town.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roth. And Laura, how'd you make out? You're on mute, Laura. You might be on the phone. Hey Laura, you're on mute if you're, if you're trying to talk to us. I assume Laura's talking to the representative that's trying to call in right now.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like she might be. They're having a conversation.
So we'll just give it one second. I will mention that this is a dual use at this location. And this requires a public hearing by this board and a recommendation from this board to the town board. The town board would have to issue a special use permit to allow these two uses. So, so the public will have another opportunity when the town board has its public hearing also, when they act upon the request for the special use permit, when we, when and if we move this forward. Okay, Ms. Robertson, are you all set?
Yeah, Diane's gonna try to call in, and if not, she can speak over my cellphone.
Okay.
Is there anyone else on the line who wishes to speak?
No, thank you, Laura. So I was trying to wait for her. But is there anybody, anyone wishing to be heard regarding the thirteen-thirty Balltown Road, the application for a special use permit for the dual use for the medical office within the retail establishment? Anyone online wishing to be heard? Okay, Laura, did you receive any emails or letters regarding this application?
So I did not receive any emails or letters. And Diana, I do see that you're, it looks like you joined by phone. So go ahead and dial star six on your phone. If that unmutes you. And if worse comes to worse, she can just speak through my cellphone, which we've done before. It's fine. Yeah, Diana, why don't you just... Oh, there you are. Okay, you got it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry about the technical difficulties. Good evening, members of the board and the community. My name is Diana Yehima. I'm an attorney with Allen and Fortuna, and I'm here on behalf of CBS Pharmacy. The property is located at thirteen-thirty Balltown Road, which is zoned a C N Neighborhood Commercial District, developed with a CBS Pharmacy for pharmacy and retail use. As you know, we are seeking a special use permit to allow for the existing CBS to have the multi-function, multi-use within one building. CBS is proposing to have a help hub, concierge desk for customer service and sales, and minute clinic rooms that are staffed with licensed practitioners in addition to the existing operating retail store. This will not change the facade, the footprint, or total square footage of the site. The scope of the minute clinic services, as I believe Josh Roth had mentioned, include care for minor illnesses, from strep throat to ear infections, minor injuries, skin conditions, health screening, travel health, vaccinations, physicals, and women's services. And this is not as broad as an urgent care center, which provides treatment of wounds, injuries, fractures, asthma, attacks, mild concussions. Most urgent care facilities also have X-ray and lab facilities and have been adding more advanced diagnostic equipment as well. So the alteration proposed will not have a significant impact on the retail space and the store. The space is typically made for the minute clinics by reducing lower-producing categories like cards or seasonal. And these clinics are very beneficial for the community. They provide immediate access for residents to healthcare without having to go to the ER or, you know, potentially wait a longer, for a longer period of time before seeing their doctor. Communities are really enhanced by increased access to services for less serious conditions at a more affordable cost as well. The savings versus urgent care is an average of forty percent. And the minute clinics in New York are operated by an entity called George Safran M D P C, which is owned by a physician. And the individual minute clinics are overseen by nurse practitioners. There may be from one nurse practitioner on duty up to three practitioners at busy times, such as during flu season. Also present at all times at the minute clinic is a care concierge, which is someone who would answer questions regarding insurance, appointment scheduling, and general health screening information, among other things. There is no license necessary to operate such a clinic in New York State. The entity has a C L I A waiver and limited services lab registration, which are both issued by the New York Lab Department. And if the board considers the minute clinic to be a distinct use from the pharmacy, it would likely fall under the definition of a medical office under the code. Medical offices are permitted use within the C N district in which the CBS is located. The minute clinic use is also reasonably related to the current retail pharmacy use as it falls within the broad umbrella of health and addressing the health needs of the community with the pharmacy retail sale of health aids, vitamins, and over-the-counter medications. And it also meets the other requirements under the code for a multi-use it within one building. The minimum lot size for both uses is fifteen thousand square feet. And the lot size of this store is approximately fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three square feet. And therefore, the area of the lot is larger than the sum of the minimum required areas for each of the proposed uses, which would be thirty thousand square feet. The existing parking count at the store is currently sixty-seven spaces. With the minute clinic, the retail square footage would be twelve thousand, seven hundred and seven square feet divided by the required two-hundred-and-twenty-five to get, to get to the total parking space requirement. You get fifty-six point five parking spots. With the minute clinic constructed, the medical use square footage would be eight-hundred-and-ninety-three square feet. If you divide that under the code by a hundred and seventy-five, you get five point one parking spaces, which rounds up to a total of sixty-two required parking spaces. So we already have more than that. And additional parking is unnecessary in any event, given that even at the busiest times, the lot is not even at fifty percent capacity. So the store has sufficient parking to account for the sum required for each use. And the minute clinic is clearly important for CBS and the community meets all the requirements and is reasonably related to the current use.
Okay. Thank you for that overview. We also have you under discussion items, a second item tonight, so we can get into details of any concerns that the board has. Right now, I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that would wish to be heard regarding this application, either online or any correspondences via email or letter in your planning office. Anybody online that wants to be heard in this public hearing? Okay, Laura, did you receive anything from anybody?
I, I did not. But Diana, if you can just use the mute button on your phone now, you don't have to worry about the star six, and that way we won't get an echo. Thank you. No, no, no more public comments for that then.
Okay, hearing, we're seeing no other one that wishes to speak regarding thirteen-thirty Balltown Road. We'll close that public hearing. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the applicants for the summaries. And we'll move on. We'll discuss that later on on, on the, in the agenda. Next up, we have privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town of Niskiuna, please state your name and address for the record. And we'll listen to what you have to say. Privilege of the floor is open. Anyone online wishing to speak? Laura, did you receive any letters or emails regarding privilege of the floor?
I did not receive anything specifically for privilege of the floor. All right, I just wanted to make sure that, are you just listening tonight? Do you want to just give me a thumbs up? I know he, because I got a late email to join. I just wanted to make sure he didn't have anything to say.
Anyone wishing to be heard? Last chance.
Okay, if you can't remember how to unmute, email me and you can speak later, okay? Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm gonna close privilege of the floor. We got a pretty hefty agenda tonight. Next up, under, on our agenda is unfinished business. And we have one item tonight, that's Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirteen, a resolution for plant approval of an A D D average density development and major subdivision at twenty-five thirty-eight River Road. And that's Kelts Farm. I just would like to mention that the resolution that was posted, Laura, you didn't get a chance to update their posting on the website, I imagine. Is that true statement? So we have a, there's a slight modification. There's one condition that was added and just a date change, and I'll mention those as I, as I go through the conditions. So what I'd like to do is start out by summarizing this this resolution. So please bear with me, everyone. Because there's quite a few conditions. It's important that we review these. Okay. And again, this is for Kelts Farm. Resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant preliminary major subdivision approval for the average density development subdivision slash special use permit known as Kelts Farm with land dedicated to the town as open space at twenty-five thirty-eight River Road as shown in an eight-page drawing set entitled Engineering Plans for the Kelts Farm Subdivision, March twenty-twenty-one, Revised April twenty-twenty-one, authored by Advanced Engineering Surveying P L L C, marked Revision Two and dated four twenty-three twenty-one, subject to the following conditions. One, for chapter one-eighty-nine subdivision of land of the code of the Town of Niskiuna, preliminary subdivision approval authorizes the developer to proceed with the construction of the subdivision improvements as approved by the Planning Board, T D E, and Engineering Department. Final subdivision approval is required after the proper installation of all improvements or a letter of credit is submitted to the town that covers the full cost of any remaining required improvements. For chapter ninety-eight, fees of the code of the Town of Niskiuna, final subdivision approval fees will be due upon receipt of the final subdivision application prior to the recording of the subdivision plat. Two, the developer shall be responsible for removing the Windsor Drive extension and replacing it with a multi-use path and small park. The developer shall coordinate this work with the Town and Niskiuna Highway Department, who will put the wing on the new road section and review the stormwater system. Three, the developer shall abandon the existing sewer line across a property in place and install a new trunk line alongside the bike path. The water sewer and sewer department will work with the developer to provide a pump to bypass the sewer connection at Windsor Drive. Four, prior to recording the final subdivision plat, a street tree planning plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Niskiuna Tree Council. Five, prior to issuing a building permit, the new houses shall be referred to and reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. Six, in accordance with chapter one-eighty of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of water, sewer, and engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has successfully been established. Seven, prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall submit a site development permit application for the administration of the SWIP and pay three-two-hundred, that's sixteen acres type, times two-hundred dollars per acre. Eight, the applicant will submit to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation a notice of intent for stormwater discharges associated with the the construction activity under State Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, S P E D I S, general permit number G P zero-two-zero-one. The applicant will provide a copy of the permit to the town prior to the final subdivision approval. Nine, should the garage floor elevation for individual lots deviate by more than six inches from the elevations approved for construction by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission or the Building Department, the revised grading plan shall be submitted immediately to the town's Engineering Office for their review and approval. Depending on the impact to the driveway slopes or drainages featured such as swales and berms, the revised grading plan may need to extend into the subdivision-wide grading plan to ensure impacts which adjacent lots are accounted for. Ten, wetland boundaries shall be recorded and shown in any plot plan of a building lot containing wetlands. Wetlands may not be disturbed, drained, or physically altered anyway without first contact in the Army Corps of Engineers. Eleven, additionally, the Town of Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within twenty-five-foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. Unless prior written all approvals are granted by the Town Planning Department, a split rail fence must be installed at said twenty-five-foot buffer for each affected lot prior to an issuance of a final certificate of occupancy. Twelve, the limits of clearing on this subdivision shall be strictly adhered to during construction. To the maximum extent practicable, the applicant shall retain as many of the site's healthy trees and native vegetation as possible. Driveways shall be sighted with least possible disturbance to trees. Thirteen, prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the Town of Niskiuna and T D E and shall address any concerns raised by the town. Fourteen, prior to site disturbance, the subdivision maps shall be modified to reflect agreed-upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, and distributed as required to the town and to all involved contractors. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. Fifteen, and this is a new condition that wasn't posted on the web, a nationwide permit is required for the disturbance to the federal wetlands. Prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall provide the permit to the Town of Niskiuna included, and included in the SWIP. Sixteen, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any engineering and drainage concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Town Superintendent of Water, Sewer, and Engineering. Seventeen, prior to the construction meeting, any questions or concerns raised by the town designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. Eighteen, prior to the pre-construction meeting, in conjunction with submitting applications for a formation of water and sewer district extensions, the applicant shall pay water and sewer trunk fees to the town of twenty-four thousand, twenty-four units, times a thousand dollars each unit, and twenty-four, that's for sewer, and twenty-four thousand for water, twenty-four units, units times a thousand each. Nineteen, applicant shall not commence home construction beyond one, beyond one model home in the Kelts Farm subdivision until such time that the road and utilities are completed and accepted by the town or security acceptable to the, acceptable to the town and Public Works Department is given to the town to cover the full cost of the improvements. Twenty, the applicant will secure all necessary right-of-way permits from the Niskiuna Highway Department, the Schenectady County Department of Public Works, as applicable to this project. Twenty-one, prior to site disturbance, the applicant must secure any necessary approvals from the New York State Department of Environmental Conference and Conservation and Schenectady County Department of Health. Twenty-two, prior to road and utility acceptance, the applicant shall finalize all parkland improvements in lieu of pavement, as described and outlined above, and pay the remaining parkland fee to the, to the town. parkland fee to the, to the town a sum of twelve thousand dollars. And twenty-three, finally, prior to road and utility acceptance, the applicant shall provide all deeds and easements to the town attorney for the review and approval. All conveyances shall be approved by the town attorney and filed in the Schenectady County Recorder's Office at the applicant's expense. Do I have a motion, uh, to approve this resolution?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a move for approval by Mr. Scrubu Tennis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Diarpino, and I'm sure we're going to need some discussion here. A little winded, so I guess I'll turn it over to maybe, uh, Mr. McPartlin or Mr. Diarpino first. Do you have any questions or comments regarding this action tonight? And I know we have the applicant online also.
Joel here.
Okay.
Okay, just to let the other board members know, there was a pre-construction meeting that the town held with the developer, and, um, I know that they covered quite a bit of information during that. Also, uh, we did receive today a response letter from the T D E addressing several of the items from the last letter that we had. Um, there've been many updates on the drawings, there still remains a few open items, some of which are covered in the resolution bullet points here, and others that'll be worked out in the forthcoming, um, next steps in the process.
Yeah, thank you, David. And, uh, Mr. McPartlin, I believe you, that was a pre, pre-construction meeting, not the actual pre-construction meeting, which is scheduled for this week. And I think, Mr. McPartlin, you attended that meeting, the pre, pre-construction meeting? Is that correct statement?
That's correct, yes.
And thank you for doing that. So we were, the board was represented at that meeting. I, I just, you know, I mean, the big, the big thing here, uh, for me is that, you know, there's still some open items. The town designated engineer responded to the items, uh, that were provided, or, or the responses, the original responses rep, provided by the applicant, but there are still outstanding items, okay? Um, and so we still need to resolve some engineering. I don't see a problem with being able to resolve those, but there's still quite a work, bit of work to be done on this application. I believe, uh, we have extensive conditions, and within those conditions, uh, um, it provides a backstop to make sure that those, uh, open items are, are, um, accurately or appropriately responded to and resolved. So I think we can get there, but there's still a, a bit of a haul to go for the applicant to get through this engineering, especially pertaining to the SWIP, uh, erosion control and sediment control, uh, practices, and, uh, any Army Corps of Engineer, uh, uh, permits that are going to be required to go forward. And so, uh, those are all within the conditions, and if any of those aren't met, obviously, uh, it'll be a delay, uh, for this applicant to keep going forward, so there's still quite a bit of work to do. I just want to make that clear. Um, is there any comments from any board members at this time regarding this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, so it, it, is it, it appears that the, the Army Corps of Engineer approval is a long lead time item to get this approved?
Uh, I'm not familiar how long that would take, but my guess is it could be, uh, based on, uh, their workload, uh, uh, the application being made by the applicant and any issues that are identified, and that could, uh, potentially hold up the applicant. Especially since we haven't, uh, haven't gotten that far. But those things obviously are important, and that's why we added condition number fifteen to make sure that that's addressed, so that we're not, uh, uh, speeding along on this and, uh, make sure we have backstops in place. I know we have the applicant online, uh, Joel, Mr. Bazoin, do you, do you have any concerns regarding that or comments regarding, uh?
Give you guys an update, um, I spoke to the D E C today, and what we're doing with the D E C is we're trying to get a, um, a waiver, uh, to get the N O I from the D E C or the SWIP approval. Normally, you need the Army Corps of Engineers wetland disturbance permit in place to get the N O I from the D E C, but, uh, they do give waivers whereby we would, uh, either bridge the perennial stream and not go with, and not do the bike path. There's, there's only two small, uh, Army Corps wetlands, uh, that we would disturb, and that's the perennial stream connecting the, essentially the east and west, uh, wetland features across Kelts Farm Drive. And also, there's that fifteen-inch culvert that's under the, uh, new bike path. So we just wouldn't do the bike path work along River Road, and my contractor, H M A, has a temporary bridge that we could bridge the, uh, the stream with. So we're working with the D E C and we're doing pretty well with them to get a waiver, to get the N O I for the site disturbance, so we could start the work while we are waiting for the official, um, Army Corps permit. And we're also in parallel, working with the Army Corps to expedite them, given the fact that, you know, this is a very small disturbance, and, you know, the disturbance benefits the town whole by, you know, allowing us to construct the, the bike path. So I think, um, there, there probably will be a delay. I don't anticipate over a month, but I think what can, can happen is that we can have the pre-construction meeting and work out all the details between the town and my contractor, H M A, while we are waiting for the, uh, the D E C N O I and subsequently the, uh, the Army Corps wetland disturbance permit.
And do you have any other concerns, Mr. Bazoin, regarding any other conditions while we're talking about those?
Uh, no, no.
So I just, like, for clarification, we can't hold a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. Um, we can't, like, we don't have the SWIP. We, I mean, a pre-construction meeting needs to have a, like, the engineering done, then you have the pre-construction meeting, then you go, like, I am supportive of what the planning board wants to decide either way tonight, but we cannot have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, and do we have that SWIP and the T D E has reviewed it, and, you know, we get that letter that says that there's no more outstanding comments. We can't have a pre-construction meeting with a huge piece of the engineering still not done.
That's fine. We should have it done quickly.
Yeah, and I understand, and actually, if you look through the conditions, the way the conditions are written, it doesn't allow for the pre-construction meeting because we don't have all the information, so, you know, so I'm supportive of, of that position by the planning office. Um, you know, it's, it's things that have to, and as you know, Joel, and the planning office and board members, all those things have to occur, so they, you know, we got it, we gotta get them done, and the applicant has to get them done in order to move forward. So it will occur, and, um, what we really need on this project is good communication because there are significant open items, and we want to make sure that, uh, you know, uh, as, as board passes this off, uh, to town engineering, the planning office, that the applicant and, you know, and obviously the town work in harmony to make sure that, uh, we communicate, um, frequently, make sure we can minimize any potential problems that we have with this project, okay?
Amen. They don't like to see my phone's number pop up in the office, as it is now, Kevin. Is that, I'd like to just inform the board that a lot of these conditions are already met, too. I mean, the, the, we, we paid the forty-eight thousand, we paid the thirty-two hundred, you know, a lot of these are already met. And I had just one question for Laura, and that's on number twenty. Have you submitted this to Schenectady County Department of Health, or is that up to us to submit?
That's up to you to submit. If it needs to be signed, we can sign it, but the developer submits to both the County of Health and to the D E C.
Yeah, we've done the D E C, but, okay, sure. We'll do it.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Khan, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Jo, Joel, but by when do you think you can get those open items closed? And, and the responses to the T D?
The, the SWIP, uh, the SWIP comment, Jengus? The SWIP comments, um, I'm wait, Nick? Nick was driving to Iowa to pick up his daughter, so he'll be back and working on Wednesday, but hopefully he'll contact the stormwater engineer tomorrow, and we'll see where we stand with the stormwater comment. The, the SWIP, the N O I from D E C, um, that, that might take a couple of weeks. That could take a couple of weeks, but I don't know, given the fact that it took them three weeks to do overlook park, but I know all the players now and all their cell phone numbers, so that could, that, that will expedite it now.
Okay. Joel, this is, this is Clark, I just had a question about the, the waiver with the D E C. Is it, is it accurate that that's just for kind of an interim state that would only, that would only exist until assuming that the Army Corps of Engineers approve the final state of your current design?
That's correct. So, in effect, the waiver would state, Clark, that, you know, we can disturb according to our SWIP, okay? But we will stay out of the, um, the two, the two wetlands.
So, and we would put that, that bridge in place, but, so what would happen if the Army Corps did not approve or had some issues with, with the, the final plan as it exists now? Would that interim state stay in effect?
Or, well, what we're looking for, Clark, from the Army Corps is a, um, a notice that they've received our application and that they acknowledge that it's not significant and that the D E C can go ahead and issue a waiver, um, you know, for us to proceed with this site disturbance. You know, we also asked them if we could phase the project. In other words, do the work to the north of the, uh, perennial stream. You know, the major, the major work is the, this new fourteen-inch, you know, trunk line that's benefiting the whole town that, you know, if we can get in and start working on that, and that doesn't entail a lot of tree clearing to do that, it's just those small number of trees at the end of the Windsor stub. So, I mean, if, even if, if we can get in and do the Windsor stub and the fourteen-inch sewer line, you know, that, that would be a major boost for us, you know? That, that's a lot of work.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Joel. Board members, questions, comments for the applicant? Anybody?
So, so it's, it's no questions for the applicant, but I'm just, I'm just wondering if with the level of outstanding work and engineering level of that work, it needs to be done, if today is the right time to vote on this resolution?
Obviously, that's a board decision. I mean, I, I got, you know, I just speak for myself, as always. I mean, I got myself there, talking to the planning office today. I, I, I was right where you're at, Mr. Khan, about whether we're ready yet. Um, you know, I was happy to see that at least the T D E did respond to the comments or the updates that were done by the applicant to date. Obviously, there's still the work to be done, but, um, you know, we do have a T D E and, um, we have, it is conditioned to make sure all those things are accomplished to the satisfaction of the town and to the T D E, utilizing the T D E. So I feel that, uh, the conditions do cover, do cover us, and remember, this is a preliminary approval, this isn't the final, and it's going to be a working process, process as we go forward. But I understand your concerns, and I share your concerns. Any other thoughts or comments from the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, and for maybe for you, Jengus, what's our risk if we approve it tonight, that we will, that work will commence and, uh, the Army Corps doesn't fully approve it, and there's changes to the plan? I'm just trying to figure out what our risk is.
Well, uh, maybe Joel might speak to it, but I would, I would imagine if there was an issue that arises during the review, either by D E C or the Army Corps, right? Is that, uh, if it's significant and, and it's going to require modifications, the applicant will have to, uh, pro, uh, propose what modifications would be required, and we'd have to probably re-engage the town designated engineer to resolve those, along with, of course, town engineering if, uh, if it was, could be resolved at that level. Uh, and I believe that, again, that's covered in the conditions, so we just have to be resolved, and we might, we might end up, uh, seeing maybe a modification to our approval in the future. Hopefully, that doesn't occur. But I think, again, that we're covered by the conditions.
A subdivision can't be recorded until final approval, so that's why the applicant can only put in one model home. He does all of the utilities and infrastructure ahead of time, then comes back for final, which I know, um, I'm sure that Art is listening because he's been very interested in how the deed restrictions happen, but they actually don't happen until right before a final subdivision because that's when you're recording the subdivisions and creating those lots and putting those deed restrictions on those open spaces.
And Kevin Paul Briggs, um, the conditions are broadly written to cover all the concerns that have been raised.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. And, and one other thing we can do, board, is, uh, you know, typically under, uh, uh, planning office, uh, reports, you know, if there's some concerns, we can keep this under reports, and we can get updates of the progress, um, and have that opportunity so that we're, so that we're not bowing out at this point in time and waiting for, uh, the final approval. So we can ask Laura to, uh, routinely update us on any issues and progress along this project, since it's such important, it's such, it's such an important project to the town and to the community. That sound reasonable, awesome? There you go. Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing no other comments, I'm going to ask Mr. Henry call the roll on the resolution. Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubu Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh. Aye. And again, as I stated, communication is key on this project. The applicant, planning office, uh, engineering will have to be deeply embedded in order to be successful here. I appreciate everybody's work, and the, uh, resolution is passed, and, uh, we'll see how it works out, and I'm sure we'll be fine. Thank you, everyone. Again, we'll, uh, under discussion times, we might have a brief discovery, uh, discussion if anything comes up, uh, throughout the meeting on this. Uh, so that's it on unfinished business, and we have some new business tonight. Under new business, we have, uh, several resolutions, the first resolution being Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, a resolution to make a secret determination call for a public hearing for a three-lot subdivision at five oh nine Fillmore Avenue. And, uh, it's a short, uh, resolution, and I'll read the, uh, summary. Resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission hereby determine that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment and hereby directs the town planner to file a negative secret declaration with the following comments. The applicant shall preserve as many trees as possible. And be it hereby further resolved that this planning board does call, hereby call for a public hearing to be held on Monday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M by video conference to consider the application of Ronald Martel for a three-lot minor subdivision at five oh nine Fillmore Avenue. And let's see, we have a project lead, I think, Mr. Oster, Mr. Oster, have a motion on the resolution?
Yeah, I moved that we adopt the resolution.
Uh, move for adoption by, uh, Mr. Oster, do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Scrubu Tennis, thank you. Uh, any discussion?
No, I mean, just that the, the, um, C A C gave a negative declaration on it, although I was curious, there is a, is there like a carriage house as part of the property in, like, the main, where the house is actually located? It looked like there's like almost a small house behind the main house.
There's definitely two garages on the bigger part.
Okay, okay, all right.
Here, you're talking about here, right?
Right, right behind the main, the house, there was almost, it almost looked like another house.
Yeah, they're both labeled as garages, but one of them, one of them does look like another house. I agree with you.
Yeah, okay, I was just kind of curious about that. But I don't think it matters for the purposes of, of the, of the, having a public hearing.
Right. And we also have this down for discuss, and I'm trying to expedite this agenda tonight. We have this down for public, or, uh, discussion. If, you know, we can do that right now. Is there any other thing that we need to talk about tonight? I think, uh, uh, we can just go ahead and have the public hearing, is my opinion, and in the meantime, if there's any other things that we need to discuss, you know, we'll pick those up under discussion at the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Great.
Okay, it sounds good, okay. So I have a, a motion, and it's seconded. Uh, do I have any other comments regarding five oh nine, uh, negative declaration or public hearing? Five oh nine Fillmore? Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Henry, please call the roll. Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubu Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Resolution is approved, and for information, we will not be talking about 509 Fillmore tonight under discussion items. And the applicant is not online either, so we'll talk next time about it through the public hearing, okay? All right, the next resolution is Resolution 2021-16, a resolution for signage at 408 Balltown Road. And that's the Maurice's. And again, I'll summarize. Resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has determined that the proposed waiver for a 36-wide times 12-high double-sided blade sign that attaches to a cantilever-type bracket that is mounted to the facade and protrudes 39 and 1/4 inches from the facade would have a minimum negative effect on aesthetics. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has hereby granted said waiver to allow the signage as described on the drawing labeled Sheet 7 of the four-page drawing set entitled Maurice's 408 Balltown Road, SP Number 14, Schenectady, New York, 12304, created by Adart of Flower Mound, Texas, and dated 2/11/21, with the most recent revision being Rev. 4, Updated Site Plan and Signs. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds that the site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves a site plan amendment. I have a motion for approval of the signage, the late sign at Maurice's 408, Sheet 408. Where am I?
Balltown.
Okay, about 408 Balltown Road, I'm sorry. But I have a motion for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scrubby Tennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Oster, and we have any discussion?
Just to confirm, this is just the one sign, not the other sign, right?
This is just the blade sign that hangs from the facade. We did, we gave the applicant feedback that we weren't interested in the pylon sign, and it sounds like that has been removed, and we're not approving any pylon sign. And I also, while we have it, and again, I'd like not to have a discussion later on this, there are two facade signs that are in the building permit process, and both of those beat the requirements of the zoning code. So we do not have to take any action on those facade signs. If I'm wrong, the planning office can straighten me out there. How's that? Any other discussion?
And just to confirm, and so although it's not called out, I do see that one of the drawings has the pylon sign, another one doesn't have it.
Yeah, we didn't get a revised set of drawings. But the resolution only takes action on a waiver for the blade sign. So the applicant could, if he wanted, take the pylon sign to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but the planning board isn't approving it.
Thank you, Laura. And has the applicant stated that they're interested in pursuing the pylon sign with the ZVA? Or have you heard from the applicant regarding that? Or is the applicant online?
Yep, I'm right here. We are not going to pursue that blade sign or that pylon sign. We just want that blade sign.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Any other questions? Any other comments, Mr. Wheeler, that you have?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so we're not going to talk later on about this, assuming that this resolution passes. No other comments? Then, Mr. Henry, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Resolution is approved, and the blade sign is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, and you don't need to stay on because, again, later on in discussion, I'm going to just skip right over this item, okay?
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a couple more resolutions, the next one being Resolution 2021-17, a resolution for tenant change at 2213 Knott Street. And that's the barber shop at Coop Plaza. Again, resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has determined that the proposed waiver for the color scheme of the Mustachios, I don't know how you say it, Mustachios? Sign four colors and a barber pole for the eye would have a minimum negative effect on aesthetics and is compatible with the existing neighborhood character. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant said sign colors waiver to allow for the signage as described above and shown on the digital image attached. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above-referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals and therefore hereby approves the site plan and tenant change. And I'd just like to mention for the board and for the public's information, we did have a resolution slight modification, and that modification was we did receive the sign information. And so the planning office, in discussion with myself, we figured we put the resolution out there and we'll work through it right now. And if the planning board has any concerns, obviously, we can make modifications or we can table this resolution, but that's the current resolution has the signage, which Laura will pull up and shows what she's got, so we can all see what it looks like. Okay, so let's start with a motion on this resolution, and I'll do that. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for 2123 Knott Street. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Chairman Walsh.
Now, seconded by Mr. Khan. And Laura, under discussion, could you pull up the signage?
Yeah, can you see it? Like, the old one, basically, can you see it or no?
No, we're looking at, it looks like an old resolution. We're looking at the resolution. You gotta go maybe one more, one more page.
Yeah, one page down.
Couple pages.
Oh, the sign. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, this isn't, this, anything in yellow was added from the packet. So like, for the public and the planning board's sake, I know I emailed it to you. But the old resolution was just a tenant change, and the new resolution with the yellow is what Kevin was reading there, that it's changed for the sign. And so the sign is 10 square feet, and the linear frontage of the building looks to be 10 square feet, so the square footage is fine. But the waiver is because basically it has four main colors, and then it was kind of hard to decide if the eye was a logo or not. It could be considered a logo. But just to be safe, I just put everything in there, so it's being marked up as four main colors and the eye as a barber symbol.
Okay, thank you, Laura. And do we have the applicant online tonight? Do you know? Is the applicant joining us?
Has there been any comment from the Knott Street business owners about this? They vet that with the owners at all?
Not. I mean, the owner of the building actually came into the building department and chatted with mostly Clark for quite a while. I don't know that we've heard from the adjacent property owners too much. Did you hear from any of them, Clark?
We've heard nothing regarding the signage. He talked a little bit about the tenant change.
Right, no, I just didn't know if they even had shared the sign with the other Coop, pardon, with the Knott Street business owners.
Yeah, Michelle is here. Michelle, are you able to unmute yourself?
I don't see her.
No, she's there.
Oh, yep, I see she's listed. She's muted, yep.
It depends on what kind of device you're on, Michelle, but if you tap the screen, hopefully, you can see like a little thing that shows up that has your microphone. And right now, it's red with a line drawn through it. You just need to click that microphone button. You know, you were able to do it before. Not that that means that.
Yeah, because we can unmute you, Michelle, so you just slide your mouse cursor down to the bottom of the screen, and hopefully, the little microphone image pops up and you can turn.
Alternatively, I will type the phone number that you can call in, and it'll pop up here in a second. Hold on.
While Laura's doing that, the open item that we had from our discussion last time was just a a concern that the business, you know, shows four stations, four barber chairs, and that, you know, hopefully, it's successful and the business would expand. And our concern was primarily with employee parking, and we asked the applicant to validate with the landlord that they'd be able to use the parking behind the building for their employees. And that was kind of the open item, and that was probably the only item we had for discussion tonight. And if the applicant's not able to unmute themselves, I know that Laura had that discussion with either the applicant or with the landlord, and she can summarize that discussion for us. It sounds like Laura is probably talking to the applicant right now.
I'm muted. And Michelle, you can also, you can call my cellphone and speak to my cellphone. It's easier. We can do it either way. It looks like you've got help. So, yeah, so, and I believe that the owner did, when he was speaking to Clark and I, say that the rear spots are available, but they are shared because there's residences on the second floor, so they're shared with the tenants.
So in other words, it's a first-come, first-served basis for the parking there. If there's a spot available, the applicant or employees can utilize it. If not, well, it's just not available. They'll have to find another spot to park, and hopefully, it's an appropriate.
I mean, that would have been the same arrangement for the previous business that was there, right?
Correct.
Mr. Khan, thank you. It's a good point.
Yep.
Same arrangement for before or for any business that would be going in there. And the applicant did state that, you know, if she's starting out by herself, it may take some time to develop to the point where there's other barbers in the business.
Laura, did the planning office discuss with the applicant about reducing one of the colors on the sign?
I did not, no. We received the sign over the weekend. And one other thing, just a point of clarification that Clark pointed out to me, is that the the design drawing shows the awning remaining, and it says the right touch right now. And so just theoretically, if the awning remained, but they changed that to Mustachios, there's a little bit of a question if that would sort of be two facade signs. So I feel like the best solution to that is if the awning's going to stay, you just have to be a black awning with no words on it, and then you could have the sign on the top that says Mustachios.
Okay, so in other words, if they leave the wording on the awning, they would be noncompliant because then they would have two signs, even though the sign does not apply to the business. So either we could, again, if we have the applicant speak, we could resolve this. One other way of resolving it is we could add a condition that states that the awning needs to be updated to remove the verbiage on it.
Yeah. So I mean, to your question, Jengus, you can, I mean, like, I could almost, I was trying to decide, you know, because we don't always count border colors. If, you know, this was, this would be three or four predominant colors, but really, I think it has to be four. If the mustache wasn't on here, then it would, then it can basically be three because this is kind of like a border, but you really have brown, red, black, and white.
It's not lit, is that correct, Laura? No lighting?
Not lit, right? It's just wood. You could potentially like lose the red, but then you might lose some of the, I don't know. I mean, I think it'd be hard to make, just by the way that is, it into three colors. Maybe.
Laura, is there a proposed elevation there?
Yeah, this is the proposed elevation here. It's just photoshopped on.
Are there any other signs that are that high on?
Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, finally, I just got this laptop. I'm sorry. I don't know how to use it, obviously.
Okay, Michelle, well, thanks for joining us. What we were just talking about is two things. Any agreement or discussion you had with the landlord regarding parking for yourself or your employees?
Yes, we do have parking in the back. He explained to me. There's nine spots, I believe, he said. But I definitely have a spot.
Okay, and of course, as the business potentially grows, you want to, you know, make sure you're successful and also don't impact the neighborhood, the residences by parking rather than that.
Oh, yeah, I would. I would.
And the other comment regarding the sign, we're getting a little bit of feedback there, by the way. I'm not sure where. The sign, you also have the awning, which has the words from the gift shop.
It was a gift shop, I believe.
Are you going to remove the words from the awning or remove the awning?
Yes, I guess he told me he was going to take that front part off, apparently, because it has the old business logo or name on it.
Okay, because obviously, it doesn't make sense with the state there, and if it does stay there, it's two signs, even though it's not an appropriate sign.
Right. I don't want it there.
And that's what we see in these one questions that we talked about about it.
Okay, we did.
Okay. Is there any questions to comment, or first mark of the applicant?
It's a little difficult for me to tell based on the proposed elevation. It seems to me to be a little out of scale with the rest of the facade of that building. That's my take, that's.
And on that point, too, if the awning comes down, it'll look really high, won't it?
Should we expand on that a little bit for a minute? We get some feedback we need to fix. We can't have a discussion like this.
Michelle, when you're not speaking, can you keep, yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Go ahead, Mr. Oster.
What I was saying was that if the awning comes off, that sign's going to look really high. It already looks high compared to the other signs. But I think if the awning comes down, it's going to look even more, even higher.
Okay, yeah, Mr. McPartlin had a comment, so let's pull it up and take a look at it. Thank you, Laura. If we can zoom in a bit. Now, the sign is an appropriate size, even though it may seem out of scale. It's within the ordinance, I believe, with 10 square feet. Is that what it was, Laura?
Yes, it's 10 square feet. You know, I think this might be similar to what the Broken Inn is proposing. Let me go look at it, but if the awning comes down, I agree with you, it should probably be moved down a little bit, but if the awning stays, then it's probably good.
Yeah, it's probably almost, I mean, again, I can't picture where all the other signs are. But, you know, the wine and liquor store and the Knott Street Market or Knott Street Office look almost kind of at a similar height. But it almost would look, it almost seems like it would look a little better if the sign came down, I mean, a little lower. If, in fact, the awning's going to be taken down anyway, it might make it look a little more on par.
And I agree with you, Mr. Oster.
So the awning is definitely being removed, is that correct?
I guess that would be up to Michelle if you could unmute yourself.
So these signs are like directly on top of the awnings, too, where there are facade signs. Those ones are on.
Yeah, he told me he was going to take the right touch off of the awning. He wants to keep the awning, but he, obviously, I can't have somebody else's business name on the front of my business. So he told me he was going to have that removed off the awning. Right, that's what he told me.
Or sort of remove the words or block it out so it's not visible or something.
Yes, and also, my sign isn't actually on the building yet. That was just a sample sign because I only had, you know, a couple of weeks to get this, and I wanted to make sure that it was the right size. So he just kind of superimposed it so we could kind of get an idea of how it was going to look. But it's actually not affixed to the building yet.
I mean, I think if the awning is going to stay, then the sign is going to need to come a lot closer to the awning. It's too high. It's too high the way it is.
Okay.
Michelle, the feedback is, is for me, is, I don't think it's on, the size meets the requirements. The colors don't seem to be, you know, that much of a serious request, I guess. But it definitely needs to be lowered if the awning stays, you know, closer to the top of the awning or if the awning is gone, you know, at least in line with the other signs along the Coop Plaza, so it looks somewhat, you know, linear, I guess would be the word. Do we need to do anything to make sure that happens or, you know, do you share our opinion, Michelle? Yeah, you're on mute right now, Michelle. Yeah, you're you're on mute right now, Michelle. Um, I think we still can't hear you.
Okay. Is it, can you hear me now? Sorry. Yes, I am in agreement that it should be level.
Level and lower.
Yes.
Okay. Is the board comfortable with it? Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
So do you just wanna, do you just wanna add, very much, I'm gonna mute you again. I don't think you can hear the feedback that we hear. It's very, it's it's really hard. Um, do you just wanna add a condition in the resolution that the signage would be moved closer to the awning and kind of just be in harmony with the in location that's in harmony with the remainder of the?
Yes, I I think we should.
Alright, so let me see, let me bring that up and see if I can propose one for you guys.
Well, there's two options, Mr. Khan. I think is that's good. The other option would be that the uh location, the signage could be approved by the planning office and then, you know, when the
See that too.
That might be easier uh because, you know, otherwise it might be slightly subjective.
Sure, but yeah, whichever way, as long as I think we put in a condition that makes it clear.
And that way, uh when they, whatever happens to the awning, then it would make sense to take a look at the final, you know, proposed location and then just approve it then. And I'd be okay personally with allowing the planning office that authority. I don't see a problem.
No, no, that's fine. I I just, I just think it should be captured as a condition.
Yeah, we send Clark down there, you know?
Clark can definitely do it. Let's see. So yeah, so that's a pretty simple condition. Make the following. What did you say? The location of the sign? The the final location. Yeah, it's really simple, right? I like that.
Okay. So thank, yeah, thank you, Mr. Khan. And uh so we're uh I'm gonna make a motion that we modify the resolution and add the condition that the uh final location of the sign shall be approved by the planning department. Make sure that the, you know, it looks in harmony with the rest of the signs, level, lowered, et cetera. So we'll make sure we get a review on that once the applicant proposes the exact location after the uh the decision is made on the uh awning. Do I have a second on that motion to modify the resolution?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I think that's a good condition. Uh let's, all those in favor of modifying the resolution signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed to modifying the resolution? Okay, hearing no one opposed, we have an amended uh resolution. Okay, any other discussions? Uh let's try another motion to approve the resolution as amended. Uh, Mr. Khan's uh
Okay, you'll move it.
Motion to approve the resolution as amended, and I'll second that in the other um discussion. And Mr. Henry, please call the roll. Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution for the tenant change and the signage for twenty-two thirteen Knott Streets approved. And uh I just like to mention, first of all, thank you and good luck with the business there. And second of all, we will not be talking about this under discussion items tonight, so Michelle, you're you're welcome to stay on board and listen, or you're welcome to sign off. We won't have any further discussions. So thank you and good luck in your business.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Bye bye.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And that brings us to our final resolution tonight under new business and Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, a resolution for signage at thirty-five fourteen State Street, and that's the Mohawk Army Navy. Resolved that the planning board and zoning commission has determined that the proposed waiver for one sign measuring one oh seven point seven inches wide times sixteen inches for a total of twelve square feet, and a second sign measuring fifty-seven inches wide by thirty-three point five inches high, totaling fourteen square feet, would have a minimum negative effect on the aesthetics and is compatible with the existing neighborhood character. And be it further resolved that the planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant a said waiver to allow for the signage as described on a digital image of the building stamped, received April twenty twenty-one, planning office, Missy, in New York, with the following conditions. One, prior to building permit, the non-per-minute signage on the northwest-facing facade of the building shall be removed. And be it further resolved that the planning board and zoning commission finds that the site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves this site plan amendment. I have a motion for approval for the signage at the Army Navy.
So moved.
How's the motion?
Moved by Mr. Oster for uh approval, and it sounds like seconded by Mr. Khan. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Uh, any discussion? And do we have the applicant online? Is there a representative tonight for?
The applicant stands by, but he's, he has a hard time with virtual meetings, so I'll call him if you guys have questions.
I I don't think we will.
But he did say, I did discuss the condition with him prior to the meeting. He was aware that they couldn't take out a building permit without taking the banner down. He said that he had discussed it with the owner and that wasn't an issue, and they were willing to do that.
I think that would be an improvement. Thank you, Laura. Any other questions for the uh planning office or discussion? Okay, Mary, now Mr. Henry, please call the roll. Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution for a signage change at thirty-five fourteen State Streets approved. Uh, and we will not uh be talking any further under discussion regarding this item later on, okay? That's it. And thank you, board, for your patience for uh allowing me to read those conditions. Uh, next up is discussion items. First, under discussion items is thirteen eighty Van Antwerp Road, a minor subdivision. At Mr. McPartland's, the project lead, and obviously we had the public hearing tonight and heard from the public. Um, and we have, let's see, we have Mr. Paleshi still online, and we have Mr., is Mr. P, yep, he is, and I see Mr. Lisi has also joined us. Um, I don't know, Mr. Paleshi or Mr. Lisi. Uh, Mr. Lisi, were you online during the the public hearing?
Uh, no, I was not.
Okay. All right, well, we heard um um some concerns and uh I guess negative responses from um some of the residents of the of the community. Um, from my notes, the one thing I, you know, I think we we should probably at least talk about, and again, I'll defer to Mr. McPartland. I'm sure he'll agree with me, is uh regarding the uh the water connection. And whether that's uh, you know, if you find one of the residents, there's concerns there and it may not, you know, may not be doable if they need to approve it. Um, and so I, you know, I don't know if we need to resolve it tonight, but if there's any insight uh that the applicant has, I'd like to like to hear it regarding the water connection.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Luigi Paleshi with ABD Engineers. Um. When we did the survey of this property at thirteen eighty Van Antwerp, prior to the survey, we actually did a survey for Rebecca Holmes as well. Um, after she had uh obtained a variance on her property, uh she hired ABD to do a survey for that property. And we did a plot plan, utility grading plan for her. Um, and that's where the the water information came from, was from that plot plan. Uh, luckily, you know, we had the survey of the whole area here, so that's what we used in this latest uh subdivision plan. Um, you know, per the record mapping plan that we used on her property. Um, so that's what we show. And, you know, a lot of times the record mapping isn't exact. Um, if if it is in fact on her property and there is no easement or the town doesn't have an easement, then all we need to do is just chase it further down Van Antwerp and connect to the water main where the water main is within the town right of way. Um, you know, we don't have to connect right there in front of her house. You know, so we'll we'll find out where the water main is and tie into it where, you know, it fits within the right of way. So I see that as no issue.
Yeah. Mr. McPartland, any thoughts or uh questions from the public hearing or anything regarding the project?
So just in reference to what Luigi just stated, um are are you saying that the water main that runs um along Van Antwerp on Rebecca Holmes' property is not in the town right of way?
I I don't know that for sure. Uh, the record map go it within the right of way. Now, she's stating that that water main is in fact on her property. We don't know that right now, but what I'm saying is if you follow the water main along Van Antwerp Road, it actually crosses Van Antwerp. So where it crosses Van Antwerp, it's gonna be within the right, the town right of way. So if we need to make the connection there, we can make our water line connections at that point. Wherever the, you know, existing water main fits within the right of way. You know, and then it's up to the town to figure out, you know, whether or not that easement is, you know, if they have an easement or not, you know, that's that's a later issue, but um, we can, we can certainly connect and find out where the water main is within the right of way, and that's where we're gonna connect to. We're not, we're not requesting an easement from Ms. Ms. Holmes.
And and she made reference to um at least one of the water lines shown um as as a private utility. But um isn't it true that one of those water mains that crosses, I'm not sure which is proposed and which is existing, crosses Van Antwerp, serves Holmes on Hilltop Road?
I'm not sure I follow what you're saying there. Our our two proposed water laterals are for lots two and three. And they would cross Van Antwerp Road and connect to the town's water main. We are showing uh an approximate location of where her water lateral is going to her home as well as her sanitary sewer lateral.
Okay. I see that now. Okay.
Okay, so obviously that's something we get, you know, has to be resolved in order to uh uh to move forward and um so it's an open eye for the applicant um to at least make a, I guess, a recommendation or proposal on how it's gonna be remedied, the situation. That fair statement?
Mm-hmm.
Um. It's about the other thing too, um that we heard, and again, I don't want to speak for Mr. McPartland, but uh, you know, the concern about, you know, reviews. Obviously, we always do an engineering review on all projects, so I guess this question would be posed for the planning office. Uh, have you discussed uh what the the plan is of attack for this application, review the uh submittals by the applicant? Would it be in-house with the town engineer, Laura, or are we looking to go outside with this?
Um, so I think I have discussed it with them. Um, they are concerned that when they do an in-house review and applicant is in charge for the in-house review, that it's kind of like a subsidy to um development. So while we haven't done that before, I think that um that we will collect some fees for reviewing the engineering, whether it be with the TDE or with our engineering office. And um one way or another, it'll be looked at thoroughly, is my answer to that.
So you'll send it out to some of the town designated?
I I think already key thing there is really the the thoroughness of this review. This, especially this water is, you know, the water issues, including this connection we're talking about today. I think we really need to get those pinned down.
Yeah, I know that Matt has actually been working on that because the applicant did reach out to him. Um. On the water line and like, he has been looking at it with the applicant. There's a variety of different pressure zones there. And I know that he has like, and I I don't actually, Luigi probably knows this better than I do. On the really long water line, I think he wanted it, the private lateral to be oversized because of pressure issues. Um, do I know he's been looking at it? It's not an easy place to get a water line. And.
Okay, so Laura, typically you would send out the uh information, look for a a request for quote or a quote from a from our town designated engineers, or would you just pick pick somebody and?
I typically just pick somebody on the list, but if the developer doesn't like the quote, I can get multiple.
Okay. So it sounds like you have an action item, then to at least get that moving forward and and working with Mr. Lisi. Uh, you know, uh, once you get the quote, uh, and the name of the company that you think is appropriate. Uh, I mean, the town engineer is gonna be involved no matter what because, you know, as we condition any of the approvals, the town engineer has to buy off on any recommendations or uh items noted by the town designated engineer anyway. So the town engineer will be involved uh in the process. But uh, you know, obviously, we just need to have a a peer review of the work that was done by ABD and obviously resolve this uh connection issue um as we move forward. I mean, what are the open items we have out there?
So um I think that we summarized the main open items. Um. So just the tree council needs to look at the trees that were coming down with the change in the driveway. Um, and that we wanted to see a street tree planting plan for this subdivision. And we want to make sure that the elevation of the homes are as early as possible referred to the architectural review board.
And those were all listed in the agenda statement, uh just for information for the applicant or the applicant's engineer in the packet that was posted online. So those are the open items. Along with anything new that we heard during the public uh public hearing tonight. Mr. Lisi, any thoughts or Mr. Paleshi?
No, I don't think so. I mean, just, you know, to to put on record, I remember meeting um, you know, the tree council and as well as Laura out on the site early on. Um, and we actually marked some trees that we were gonna keep, and that hasn't changed uh from my understanding, so uh you know, we can certainly, you know, they're on the plan right now showing which trees, you know, we've actually surveyed them here, showing which trees that are gonna remain, so.
Yeah, the only change obviously was the relocation of the garage and any impact on any trees there, of course.
Right, and there I I call out that one tree to be removed on the plan, so. I just don't know what else you're looking for as far as a tree planting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Paleshi. Thank you. Yes, so I guess that's really the ball then would be Laura to to schedule the tree council and, you know, let let the applicant know when that is in case they want to join in.
Yeah, the tree planting plan would be two trees in the right of way for each lot. Usually on, you know, they're usually on either side of the driveway.
Okay.
You can add that to the drawing, Mr. Paleshi.
Yeah.
Okay.
Luigi, just just a question. The the alternate water connection, if you're not gonna be able to use the one by Mrs. Holmes' property, i- is that showing on the map or no?
Yes. Yeah, we're we're showing the proposed uh tie-in for the two water services on the map.
Laura, do you mind bringing it up just?
So Lu- Luigi, I'm looking at the the plan and it, just so everyone can understand, at the back of lot two, straddling a a long lot one where the original house is, there's an easement for the water line that serves over to lot number three. The connections both go across the road and it looks like the water line is falling just on the edge of the road about fifty feet within Ms. Holmes' property. So if that doesn't fall within the right of way, the directional boring is a very minimally invasive process. They they dig a hole on one side of the road. There's a hole on the other side of the road. They bore underneath it. They're not excavating and trenching across the entire road. So I've I've seen the process done many times. If that has to move, it could move approximately fifty to sixty feet. Um. Would be like to the south along along Van Antwerp in order to make that connection. So depending on where that the right of way is, there's the opportunity to pick up that water line in several locations.
That's correct.
Yeah, but but where would that other water connection be? Yeah, but but where would that other water connection be?
They would both be near each other.
Assume for a minute, we can't use the one that's, pardon?
I'd say look at the connection where thirteen eighty Van Antwerp ties into now. You can see the approximate existing water service. It's closer to the intersection of McGovern.
Okay.
So what Mr. Darpino was saying is is you would directionally bore on the south side of Van Antwerp road and head east towards McGovern and make the connection where the existing water main crosses Van Antwerp.
So I'm looking, I get, Laura, can you point out where that water main by McGovern is crossing Van Antwerp?
So you see where the word?
Yeah, okay, there, okay.
Yep, yep, there you go.
Yeah, okay, got it, okay, got it, yeah.
Yep, yep.
That would serve, would that service the two new homes or would that also be uh, would thirteen eighty also be updated to that water service?
We're not proposing any updates to thirteen eighty. That's an existing service and it's being occupied now, so there's no need to upgrade that. Um, it would be for two new services.
And so you would do that, and so you would run? Okay, so you'd run all the way up Van Antwerp to get to that location? By McGovern.
Hey Laura, Laura, could you put the map back on?
Oh, yes, sorry. I was just going to say that that's a long run again, so you're going to have to work out with Matt like the size of the line. It's can probably, it's a really borderline pressure.
Yeah, we've we've done that many times where it's a longer run and you typically go uh, to an inch and a half service. Depending on the run, sometimes you got to go two inch, you know, uh, we can certainly provide that cap.
Laura, if you look at the three lot subdivision that got approved for Mrs. Holmes on McGovern Drive, you remember, you allowed uh, the developer to extend the water main in front of the first lot of McGovern and run two lines across the entire parcel to the two lots on Hilltop.
Yeah, they connect to McGovern up here.
Right, that's a much, that's a much longer run than the run that we're going to proposing. So we could always extend that main uh, towards Van uh, Antwerp like you did with those three lots and run it along the existing house side back to these two lots, just it'd be identical to what you did on the other three lots. The pressure on Van Antwerp on McGovern is fine. So remember, we uh.
McGovern might be on a different pressure zone though.
Yeah, we know, we we fed three lots on off of McGovern by extending the uh, we had to put a new hydrant, we extended it uh, towards Van Antwerp. So that's a much longer run than we're proposing on the property on Van Antwerp. But we can do the exact same thing we do at those three lots. We just extend the water main again with the hydrant and run along the property line between those three lots and these two lots.
Extend the water lane on McGovern?
Yep.
Yeah, you could do it that way, too.
Yeah, and then and then run an easement along those property lines to those two houses, which is identical to what you'd allow Mrs. Holmes to do.
Yeah, down here, like along this lot.
That actually. Yeah.
Right, because that's what we did for that.
Yeah, that might be actually. That might be a better solution, right?
Yeah, we could do that. It's 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 identical to what you did for the three last for Holmes did.
Okay, well, you make the recommendation, you know, and then uh, Laura will ID a town designated engineer. That'll be part of the review process, and of course, the town engineer will uh, will uh, support that with any information regarding pressure zones or any concerns that they may have with the path chosen. That's something we'll just work through with engineering.
Yeah.
Again, you know, I'm not trying to belittle it, you know, it could be significant, but it's something that's got to be worked through.
Right.
What other open items do we have at this point in time? All right, what I heard was uh, get the tree council back out there again, once we update the streeting, uh, street planting uh, on the drawing. It are getting a town designated engineer on board and the applicant making a recommendation of uh, uh, water route line for the town engineer for the TDE to review. And we'll start down the engineering process. I think we need one cut of engineering uh, to at least look at the uh, of the water analysis that was provided by the applicant. And uh, we get it, get the ball rolling, I guess. Am I missing something? No? That sound reasonable to the board and to the applicant? Get the process going, start the engineering, right?
Okay, so Lou just, Lou just dropped off, but if they have an idea of the homes. Oh, he's back, yeah. If you guys have elevations or an idea of the homes that you want, like you can submit them to Clark so that he can get them on the architectural review board early.
Yep, thank you, Laura. Yep, get some feedback, you know, that's what the architectural review boards for, give us some feedback and move it forward.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, any questions from the board for the applicant or any comments? Nothing else? All right, so we got some open items. If I don't hear anything else, I'm going to move, you know, we're going to close this and uh, wait for the applicant uh, to make the recommendations on the water line and provide things that we need and the town will start reaching out to a town designated engineer to work with the applicant on that. Reasonable? Okay? Okay. All right. No other questions, then I'm going to close this item and we'll uh, look, obviously carry it forward, but we'll close it for now, okay?
Great.
All right, all right, thank you, everyone. That's it for thirteen eighty tonight. And we got some work to do there. Next would be thirteen thirty Balltown Road, the CVS interior modifications. I know we have the applicant, the attorney and uh, and uh, Mr. Roth, I don't know if he's still online or not.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
He's there.
Okay, good, yeah, just scrolling down, thank you. Thanks for your patience, um.
No problem.
Um, so we had the public hearing tonight. And I think, you know, the uh, well, let's see, we have a project lead for this one, I'm trying to remember, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's me, that's me, Mr. Rush.
Mr. Khan, so maybe if you want to go ahead, you can, Mr. Khan.
Yeah, so I mean, there were the three items in the package, hopefully, uh, Mr. Roth aware of that, particularly the traffic. You know, the um, some form of a traffic assessment, at least as of now, about the increase in traffic due to dual use, then the other items were related to just how you're going to handle the increased garbage and medical waste. And the other one, um, I guess the thing about the licenses, the the lawyer that was on did mention it. And so um, it seems that you don't need a specific license in New York State, that's what we heard.
This is correct.
Okay. So more, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to you to think that that's reasonable.
Well, I mean, again, I I'm I'm I am not necessarily a complete expert on it. I mean, I was confused because there was a reference to a physician, an MD and Minute Clinic, and I was trying to understand, but I'm not sure that's necessarily relevant for what we're trying to do here. I just was, it did sound like because you're talking about a use within a use. This is like a co, essentially, even though it's Minute Clinic is owned by CVS, it's essentially a business within a business.
That is correct, and that business has a a administrative agreement with a physician's uh, business. And they operate that Minute Clinic for us under their license.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I I guess the only question I have for this is Laura, wh- what what kind of paperwork proofs need to be provided to ensure that this business, this use within the use is licensed to operate there? I guess that's the key thing, right? We, you know, we we, you know, we do it with salons and barber shops and all kinds of stuff, and we ask them for their licenses and permits. So I just want to make sure there's something that catches that this is a licensed operation. Or if there's no license required, that's something that's made official.
So the building inspectors would review all the plans to make sure that they meet code. But like, as far as I know, like when um, Wellnow went in, they have to do their licensing with the state separate from the building inspectors. Um, so it's not really like a restaurant, like for a restaurant, the building inspectors actually check to make sure the Department of Health is like approved everything before their final CO. To my knowledge, it's actually on the applicant to make sure that they're fully licensed with the state. And it would theoretically be at their own risk if they don't have the correct licensing. Um, they would be shut down at a higher level. My building inspectors will check for all permits, though, that are required, to the extent that they can.
So 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 I I understand their liability then being taken by the applicant, Mr. Roth, but I mean, I I guess just for you know, completeness sake, some kind of a letter or something that you know, makes it clear that there's no that a license has been waived or as as the as the lawyer told us.
Well, is is there a um, is there a place in the application, permanent, permanent application or special use application, we can place that in along with that documentation? Or is that a document that we can provide prior to the the CO being um, being released to the building?
Well, my opinion is uh, we got some time because we still have to have a public hearing for the town board once we make a recommendation to them, so I think it's a work in progress. Uh, it's whatever is the easiest, whether it be a a letter, a statement, a copy of uh, whatever legislation invokes, whatever rules or whatever it may be, you know, we'll leave that up to you to you know, show us what that is. It might be as simple as a one-page document or summary, okay?
I can certainly provide letterhead from um, that partner that we use um, with uh, Minute Clinic that um, can at least demonstrate that um, there is an existing legal agreement between us. And they are the licensed carry holder um, for this particular service. Uh, I'd be happy to to present that to the board. And I also want to let you know that just like our pharmacists and pharmacy technicians in our pharmacies, those, all the appropriate licenses are also displayed um, in the clinical area. So in this case, they would be displayed in the Minute Clinic health hub areas.
Okay. And and I didn't catch it.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, just quick, I I didn't catch it when the when the lawyer was speaking, but but is that physician? Who is the head physician, who I know will be nurse practitioners there physically, but the physician's name is, is that person a New York State physician? Licensed in New York State?
Um, they they would be licensed, that particular practice is licensed in New York State. If you like proof of that particular physicians.
No, I I I got it. I think the kind of, I understand, I think what's happening. So I think um, the the uh, just a statement or a letter or something along the lines that we've discussed, you know, would should be sufficient.
So I did see his name on the physician profile. I was looking, I looked, I was looking it up. I can't now, I forgot the name, but I looked it up in the physician profile. And if it's the same person, you know, yeah.
Yeah, so I think more what's happening there is that he's already licensed in New York State, but I don't think there's a specific license that's going to be required for this clinic.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, but that's okay. I mean, just something that dots the eyes and crosses the teeth with that. Okay, so um, look, the main thing really is, I mean, I guess we can go through each of the remaining two, right? So any, did you get any updates about the traffic increment? I think Chairman Walsh had recommended that you at least can start with one of the um, highway traffic usage books, right?
Yes, I actually referenced the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh, their tenth edition regarding trips generated. Um, there is a land use code for a pharmacy with a drive-through window that would encompass the vast majority of the building, the gross leasable area. Um, and you're looking at a a trip count of ten point, we'll say ten and a quarter per thousand square feet. And then you're looking at a clinical use, which this particular uh, proposed um, area would be. That's land use six thirty in that book. Um, that's actually anywhere from sixty-eight to fifty percent less trips generated than a pharmacy. So the it's the the proposed use for this Minute Clinic would actually reduce the trips generated for the building as a whole.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't reduce it, right? It would add fifty percent, right? Because the pharmacy is still being operated.
Well, the pharmacy is still being operated, but you're, the pharmacy, the whole building right now would be the pharmacy retail use. And that is ten point two nine trips per thousand square feet. And if you carve out roughly eight hundred ninety-three square feet out of that, that eight hundred ninety-three square feet would be that clinic use. And that clinic use is for a suburban or rural area, three point two eight trips per thousand square feet. Or an urban area uh, would be actually around five trips per thousand square feet.
So what you're saying is that the new use is less intense than the current use?
That's correct.
How did, can I, can I have, because I I, I understand the scientific assessment of those numbers. How do those work vis a vis when you're changing an existing footprint? When, I I mean, I understand from like when you first create something, that's how you calculate it, but do those same numbers apply when you're converting an existing use or carving in a new use in that existing use?
Yeah, that's the, that's the methodology that I use. Right now, the entire building is under that pharmacy with a drive-through window use that has that very high trip count. And that's generating that high, those high trips in the community. Um, and if you carve out that small area for the Minute Clinic use, and I'm also including the the waiting area as well, not just the clinic rooms themselves. And I'm trying to be as conservative uh, for the board as possible. Um, that small area of the building now will generate less trips than the rest of the retail uh, area of the building, given that trips generated for retail pharmacy use is higher than a clinic use.
Yeah, so 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 I I remember the, you know, the traffic book was, I think, a start, right? And so I understand the math behind it and what's going on with the reduced area, but at the end of the day, you know, based on, I think, what your intent is, and I know you are discontinuing some products, et cetera, to actually, you know, you know, ha- have an appropriate spacing within the existing pharmacy use. Right? I I I still would expect that you're going to get the people who are coming to the CVS pharmacy. And in addition, you're going to get the people that are coming to the clinic. I don't think that's unreasonable, right? I mean, someone can question that, but I don't think that's unreasonable.
One one thought um, I have is that is that you have a baseline with actual, what is actual? We don't know what actual is, right? We got, you know, textbook for both, right? We don't know what actual is. Is the actual uh, equal to or greater than what the engineering handbook says, or is it less than? And that's the only way we'd know is somebody would, you know, take those counts, right? So but I think what Mr. Roth was saying is if we uh, to even be more conservative, we could say that it's the same as it is now would probably be even more conservative. Is that a true statement, Mr. Roth?
Um, you know, I I'm being really conservative because I'm also including the waiting area, and the waiting area has some chairs and just standing area.
A- a- actually, Mr. Roth, let me, you know, let me make clear, and I think I said it last time, but but, you know, I want to make a hundred percent clear where I'm coming from on this. That's a very tough intersection. And it can, and I'm concerned that it can cause a high level of inconvenience for people wanting to use the clinic that'll cause them to actually not use it. And it'll just go in a in a direction opposite to what would be success for CVS there, right? And so we really need to make sure that, you know, we've got the best data and we make the best determination of if there's a time to change traffic flows and signage, this would be the time. But are are you local by any chance?
Uh, actually, little around.
Okay, so if, I'm going to highly recommend that you ask the manager of the store, right, how people navigate that intersection specifically if they want to come out onto the entrance of Balltown and go south on Balltown. It, that's a near impossible, it's a near impossible turn to make at certain times of the day. Right? And so that's really what we're trying to get at here, which is, you know, we're not, we're not making it difficult for the sake of being difficult, right? It it it, I I think it could definitely affect the 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 traffic that comes into the store based on any kind of increased usage that would cause more congestion in that area.
Understood. I with um, with the the institutional knowledge of of these particular calculations and land uses as well as the, oh, by the way, these these let, these these trips generated are the PM peak hour trips, so they, that is worst case scenario. Combined with the camera footage that I did tap into with at the store, looking at the parking utilized as well, because trips generated is one thing, parking spots utilized is also another, but I think they're interrelated. Um, I believe if, even if this Minute Clinic does do very well business, I can't imagine that it would exceed the trips uh, generated for just the retail use.
Okay, so I mean, you know, I'll I'll put it in front of the planning board as exactly what information we'd want to seek next, right? Mr. Roth did get the numbers, and I understand how because of the reduced square footage, it looks like there's actually less intensive use. But we know that intersection very well, right? And the way I look at it, there is another, there's another service being provided now in that building.
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Khan, and I, this comment I had when we first discussed this. And because if you're coming out of there and you want to go, you want to go south on Balltown, I know that I I I go out the exit, go on to uh, Van Antwerp, and I pick up that light because that's a nice, easy way to get out. I hate to say trial and error for anybody that goes there, but it's, I think it's pretty obvious. I mean, obviously you don't want to get there and try to pull out and try to back up or, you know, change your mind, but you learn unfortunately, um, the easy way to get out of there. Um, it's a good point, though, regarding the the parking spaces and the capacity that we have. Uh, again, if you're real conservative, it's the same. But I think, and mentally, we all think that it's going to be increased as a, as a result of the new use. Uh, but if you could reach out to management there and uh, maybe ask them, or if you have any cameras, whatever, to see if there's any concerns or any issues with the way that they ingress or egress the property, that would be nice to. to see if there's any concerns or any issues with the way that they ingress or egress the property, that would be nice to to understand. We don't need to resolve it tonight, but I think you can hear that there's a concern with the board just making sure that the site works safely. I guess is the concern.
Yeah, I mean.
Access reported going into the site or egressing the site or in the site?
Egressing, I think, is the the primary concern.
Yeah.
I mean, ingressing can be a problem if you're if you're going south at the at the wrong time and you try to make a left to pull into there. But I think pulling out is even tougher because you got to cross two lanes of traffic, of course, you know?
And and the question would really be, do we do nothing? Or do we need to do some sort of signage and traffic flow rerouting?
Yeah, I mean, it could be as simple as a sign that says, you know, you'll exit the Van Antwerp to go south or just some kind of educational thing, you know?
And Laura, those these things sound reasonable to you from, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think that when you're looking at a special use permit for two uses in one building, you do just want to double check your parking and your, that's one of the things that the special use permit, the town board has to look at. So it'd be helpful if you guys included it in your recommendation. But I was just going to ask, just because the town board has such a high lead time, I have it tentatively scheduled in the agenda meeting tomorrow to recommend a call for a public hearing, which is then still a month out for them. But would you guys, knowing that this additional data was coming and that you're looking at it, be be okay with a tentative recommendation?
I was going to get there, Laura. We, you know, we're in the discussion. I was going to get there because obviously it's a longer process and we have to get it through the town board in another public hearing. So you do have time to resolve this. At least make sure that the board is comfortable or the town board is comfortable. So the town board may ask the same questions with Roth, or have the same concerns that we have. So it's good to get up out in front of that, you know? And it could also be resolved once we get some information, like again, through a condition or through signage or educational or some way, if there is a problem, that's something that we can address and I'm sure we can get through it. At least that's how I feel. There was also one other comment I believe we received from one of the other advisory boards regarding, did the CVS consider a separate entrance at all for the minute clinic?
No, we typically don't explore a separate entrance for the specific minute clinic that we're installing in our typical prototype design. If there was a completely separate use that had different operating hours, we would definitely, you know, explore that possibility. But we we don't have a separate entrance for our clinics.
And I'll be honest with you, I was a little I'm a little concerned with a separate entrance because then once you get a separate entrance, you might lose parking spaces. You need handicap access, and it might actually complicate or reduce the parking and create other issues. So I was I'm okay with utilizing the existing entrance personally.
There's also some life safety issues as well. If given the configuration of the existing building, if you put path of traffic for traffic for pedestrians to that separate entrance and it interferes with our drive through lane, that's a big problem.
Yep. Yeah, I wasn't a big fan of a separate entrance. Chairman Walsh, should we address the, you know, ask Mr. Roth to address the the medical waste and increased garbage? I think there was some feedback from people in the area, right?
Yeah, we just, yeah, Mr. Roth. We discussed last meeting that there was just some concerns about housekeeping over there for the existing waste streams. And I think you're just going to pass that on to the the management chain over there. You know, keep an eye on what's outside of the enclosure, so on and so forth, and make sure the doors are closed. If you haven't had an opportunity to do that, you know, we still would like to, you know, to pass that on. And the other question, as Mr. Khan stated, is is new types of waste that'll be generated, you know, needles, etc.? I think you made the statement last time that, you know, those are typical things that you subcontract for pickup for those materials. Is that correct?
That's correct. The the existing, for instance, the existing medical waste for our pharmacies, where we do have inoculations and immunizations, those sharps containers, they're put in compliant biohazard red containers in a secure area. In this case, for the minute clinic, they'd be doing the same. There are secure biohazard containers in each clinical room, and those are secured in the room and picked up by a national account vendor specifically for medical waste.
All right.
Okay.
So the, as Laura stated, the next thing we got to talk about, you know, we can keep this moving. Obviously, there's some things we need to come through. I I don't want to say they're minor. Like, I know we can address those. Can we at least have a resolution prepared for the next meeting, making a recommendation to the town board?
Yeah, I'm 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 okay with that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, or sorry, Jengus, I wonder if I could just ask a couple of business questions of Mr. Roth, just quickly. So, Mr. Roth, could you just refresh my or just repeat for me? What's the business relationship between CVS and Minute Clinic? Is is Minute Clinic wholly owned by CVS?
That is correct.
Has there ever been an occurrence where a minute clinic is co-located into CVS? A determination is made that it wasn't profitable and they withdrew?
I'm not aware of that history. I know that we have built clinical rooms in certain stores very far in the past where demographics may have changed and we decided not to operate. It could be licensing issues. It could be state board issues. It could be regulatory issues. It could be special use permit issues. And there are very few amount of what we call dark clinics where the clinics are built, but they're ready for either of those variables to change.
So the question maybe not to be answered tonight, Laura, but I wonder if we could look at, what I would be concerned is a determination would be made that this particular minute clinic wasn't wasn't viable with withdrawal. Want to make sure that incompatible usage wouldn't move into that special permitted space, that we'd limit its suitability in the future if the minute clinic were to withdraw so that we don't find non-harmonious uses in this same building. I I don't know if that's possible, but I I could see a situation where parts are separates, there's some separation between Minute Clinic and CBS, that they we maintain some coherence between those two uses in the future. Right now, we see there's there's a fair amount of medical space in our town. We have a bunch of, we have a bunch of clinics and, you know, maybe there's an oversupply. So I just want to make sure as a future issue that they're compatible usage going forward.
So just to be clear, though, a special use permit is for the use. And this would be for allowing two uses in the building. And we did, at the Conservation Advisory Council, this permit was specific to the square footage so that if in the future, the minute clinic was so successful that they wanted to take like, you know, and build six more rooms, that would still trigger site plan approval, which it would. But it won't need another special use permit. So anytime that there's a special use permit, it's for the use. So as long as the medical use and the retail use continues, like Minute Clinic could change its name to Red Heart Wonderful or something, and that would be okay. And if it was run by a different license or even separate from CVS but still inside that building, that would be okay. The only thing that really couldn't happen is a change in the square footage or a change in the intensity of use because it's a special use permit.
Or the type of use, of course.
Or the type of use, right? I think that's what Michael, Mr. Scrubby tennis is getting at. I think it's the type of use, right? So.
Yeah, like you couldn't go from medical use to now office space, like that would be a different.
What if what if Minute Clinic left Well Now, wanted to move in there, right? And they wanted to do dual signage? I mean, so what what would we do?
Signage, but if it's still a medical professional, if it's still medical professional use, you don't need a special use permit. And if they're not changing the walls or anything, and it's just a, it's just almost like then, I don't even know if that would be a tenant change. It'd be very close. But you might be able to call that a tenant change, and you guys could review it for the change in the tenant, but you wouldn't need a special use permit. Almost anything that happens in that building would only be site plan going forward.
Well, with that specific. Okay. If with that specific example, Mr. Scruby tennis raised an interesting distinction. Well, now is an urgent care operation. And the applicant has has represented that this would not offer the same services as an urgent care setting. And I do believe that is an important distinction and that that should be written into to whatever special use permit is granted. And I also can disclose that CVS does prefer that some of the lower performing minute clinic rooms and practitioners, they actually still utilize the space even though it's underperforming, and they use that for telehealth. So it could be telehealth visits within that particular state to help customers and patients remotely.
That's fine. That reduces vehicle trips.
And I think if, you know, again, the site planning process is the trigger here, to your point, Mr. McPartlin, Mr. Scruby tennis. If Well Now or somebody has a higher intensity of use with like emergency services, maybe ambulance pickups, that would have to come through us. And and that's going to change the whole deal, right? Because that definitely traffic could be a problem. Where are you going to park the ambulance side to get out? You know, what's the intensity? Is it more so than, you know, what's the hours, you know, operational, all those things? And currently, the CVS hours are the same as the CVS hours, right? The proposed hours are going to be the same. So, you know, we would we would have the opportunity under site plan to make sure we interject ourselves and not allow it to get out of control.
And, Mr. Chairman, CVS does see that as an inappropriate use of that permit.
Very good comments. Thank you, everyone. All right, and then we could have the resolution if there's any open items, you know, the recommendation to the town board. Like, we don't resolve the traffic to our satisfaction. We could, you know, we'd have a condition in the resolution that says just validate, you know, the Traffic Engineers Guide, you know, is accurate or, you know, whatever we need to do to make sure that we're comfortable and the town board is comfortable, we can add to those conditions.
Yeah, but but just to finish up one thing with Mr. McPartlin's point, right? I is there a way to approve that use as it explicitly is in the context of Minute Clinic? So that if an urgent care came in there, although it's medical use, that that special use permit wouldn't apply or the special use permit has to be general for what's there in the code in terms of medical practice?
I think we should, we have exclusions, especially use permit that excludes certain services such as first aid, diagnostic imaging, trauma.
I think, and Paul Briggs can jump in here, you want, you can, you can definitely put conditions on special use permits that are relevant to the things that are looked at when you have a dual use. But so you could put things like, you know, this, you know, increases in square, you know, square footage would trigger. I mean, you can be a little bit clear about like, okay, so if we're, if we, you know, but you'd really, you, I mean, you got to tie it to something that is relevant to the special use permit. And I think you have to be a little bit careful saying that this, this and only this can go there forever because it's not how special use permits work. But you can, but but you can say like, you know, and it's true of our code anyway, that, you know, under, you know, you can put, you know, reminders that any change of ownership requires site plan review under code or something like that, just so that it's out there and everybody can see it listed in the resolution.
Well, here's an example. I I read an article about Walgreens and CVS, who are both sort of pursuing this clinic within the pharmacy as as a business model. Some of them appear to be offering dental services already. So I think I would propose that, very simply, the special use permit just says the the providing dental services would constitute an increase in the intensity of use and require another special use permit.
So I can weigh it in at both, but it definitely doesn't pass the breaks.
You can't use medical office as just a broad term for anything that that can be provided in urgent care or any any physician practice of any specialty.
Well, you, our code does not distinguish between medical office and professional and dental office. So a dental office is considered a medical professional office. So if you if you're getting a special use permit for two uses, dual uses in a building, one is retail and one is medical professional, you you couldn't say you can have this medical professional and not that medical professional because our code doesn't distinguish between the two.
Yeah, and I think, Patrick, the point you're raising is an important one, and I think I was coming from where Laura's coming from. I actually don't think that we could do that, but I think we can tie something to a change in what that specific medical use is relative to, again, traffic or square footage or something else, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's.
I mean, Paul Briggs could weigh in on it, but I think.
Well, if I'm following you, Jengus, and so if that's true, then I think we all need to consider the gravity of this recommendation and the possibility that this medical office could provide a variety of services down the road that might require access and egress by emergency vehicles. And in which case.
Those would trigger tenant change, so the.
Exactly, that's exactly.
Difference between a special use permit and a site plan review.
Yeah, so we can have a condition that says if there's any tenant change or any other business, whatever words you want to use, that's different from what, you know, what's proposed here by CVS, that site plan review would be required because the special use permit's already been issued. And then they would have to come to us and say, here's our proposal. We want to expand it to dental. And we could say, you know, what's, you know, what's the numbers for dental? What's the, you know, square footage, you know, what's the traffic? And we'd have that opportunity. So we could condition it not for the special use permit for the dual use, but for any change of use on a go forward basis from this approval. I think that might that might satisfy the concerns that you guys have.
Well, you know, the the concern that was raised is that CVS could change. The concern that I'm raising is that CVS could change the services that they're providing.
Yeah.
Now, that would be great, and that would mean that this this location is thriving as intended. But I would think it would constitute an increase in the the intensity that we're not contemplating in this discussion.
Okay, maybe maybe the condition would say any changes of services provided under this approval would require site plan, trigger site plan. Or, I mean, that would be a tenant change, as Laura said, right? If you had dentists coming in, I would.
No, but I mean, to Patrick's last point, even if it, you know, Minute Clinic might want to expand its services. Right?
Yes. From this proposal without site plan. But the special use permit, which is, I think, what you see typically, this special use permit is kind of a one time deal. And you can put, you can put conditions in your recommendation to the town board for special use permit, you know, like that you that you want to double check the traffic and stuff. And then when it comes back to you for site plan, you can be more specific and limiting.
The type of use.
No. Square footage and stuff like that.
Yeah, but I think some point, it it doesn't have to be attached to the special use permit, but something that allows us if there's a change in the intensity of use. If there's a change, it would cause a change in the intensity of use, then I think that's something that needs to come back for the planning board.
So, yeah, any any site plan changes would come back to the planning board. So if if they were going to add another room where Well Now was going to take over the Minute Clinic or, you know, a dentist's office was going to to take over the clinic, that those would be site plan changes. But like, I mean, I don't really know exactly how this. Like, if you could offer a teeth cleaning or something, I don't know that that is going to trigger. You know, because we don't get into the minutia of a business operation like that. You know, like, we don't ask Well Now what they treat and what they don't treat when they go into Mansion Square. Like, I don't know where their level is. Like, if you fall and you break open your tooth, can you go to Well Now and they'll patch up your mouth and then you can go to a dentist later? Like, I don't know.
Right. I mean, so Laura, I mean, the key thing, the key thing comes back for me to the, to, it's again, it's the intensity of use issue, right? It's, I I I think things are going to, if they're, if the business is thriving there, I think. Yeah, I think the traffic situation is going to become more of an issue, and it's all a good thing. And I just want us to be ahead of that than behind it. That's all.
All right, maybe maybe what we can do is, you know, we can go forward and, you know, call for the resolution. We'll put the conditions in or statements we want to send out to the town board, right? send out to the town board, right? We will carry it as an open item about how we're going to control the intensity of use, which would change traffic flow, et cetera, et cetera, somehow. And maybe Laura could speak offline with Mr. Briggs about a potential condition some, you know, when we get to a further along the process that can somehow protect us from changing the intensity of use. But I agree with you guys, but there's got to be a way that we can condition it to make sure it doesn't fall off, you know, we don't, we don't want to get blindsided with, I agree, I think with WellNow or something along those lines going in, it's very clear. But when you start getting into some of these other things that Mr. McPartland is bringing up, it may not be so clear. So we want to somehow make sure there's a trigger, you know, we get involved.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, we've, we've allowed for a certain square footage medical practice within the bill. And theoretically, that could be any kind of a medical practice down the road with that special use permit.
Right. And we want to control that, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Um, look, there's one last thing. I know, I don't want to belabor the point. And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to go and check this, but there's going to be no changes to the restrooms, to the bathrooms in the building? Is that?
I have the plan up here. Let me just reference it really quickly, while I was
Yeah, I'm, and, and I guess from a, I guess from a square footage perspective, Laura, the bathrooms will be fine. But I just want to ask the question from this change in use or this additional use, does that still hold true? I mean, it's good at least that, so, so I actually, so somebody needs to tell me because I've never used the restroom at CVS. Is that something you've got to like ask permission to go use? Or is it something that's available or what?
So the restrooms at CVS are always available to the public. Sometimes they are publicly accessible through a hallway, um, right from the retail floor like this particular store is. Um, and sometimes they are through another space like a stockroom. They could be still compliant, but if the customer does request access, um, the colleagues at the store will give them access to the restroom, then we will escort them to the bathroom outside. And can escort them back.
Yeah. So thanks, Mr. Rans. So does anyone know how this one works? I mean, people that just go to the bathroom?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the restrooms in this particular store, we are not proposing to renovate or touch. It looks like they are already compliant.
Yeah, yeah, I see it on the drawing, but I just want to make sure that from the, both the square footage and usage perspective, Laura, building department wise, those bathrooms will suffice?
Yeah, I mean, the, the building inspector will always double check that. But these plans were actually to spec when they were submitted, um, because they didn't necessarily know whether or not it would trigger a planning board review. Um, so these are actually like spec out building plans. So their architect would have reviewed what the New York State Building Code requirements are. My building inspectors would double check that.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure we just, you know, had that as a point that would be verified.
Yeah, they definitely check bathrooms. Like, a lot of times, I mean, see, like he said, they are compliant. Um, if they were doing enough changes, like the, like tenant changes, um, sometimes cause problems. Like, I think we even talked about this with Broken Inn, is that you have to make a bathroom ADA compliant when you go in there and you start touching things. And so that can be a little bit onerous sometimes, but this one is already.
Yeah, no, I noticed it was
The one thing that might have to change is if it wasn't, then they would have to make it ADA compliant.
So it, it looks in the drawing like it is for sure. Like I said, I just
Yeah, it has the circles.
It's adequate for them.
Yeah.
Okay. And like I said, I, I actually just, I didn't get a chance to go, so I didn't know actually how the bathroom worked. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm, I'm good with everything.
Okay, so it sounds like, are you okay? And then with a resolution, making a recommendation, a positive recommendation for the special use permit for a town, we can condition that? Potentially, I'm hearing two conditions.
I'm, I'm okay, but for the other board members, if, you know.
The conditions I'm, I'm hearing is that, that, you know, we're comfortable with the, uh, the intensity use in regards to the numbers generated from the traffic engineering handbooks. And then, uh, anything we can say that we want to, anything we can add after Laura talks to Mr. Briggs about whether we can, uh, make sure that we include any types of changes of, uh, of the practice that's being proposed, you know, trigger site plan to make sure that, uh, it's, the intensity is controlled somehow. That's all. And I think we can do that again, and we'll have another opportunity if the town board gives a positive, or grants the special use permit. It's going to come back to us and we'll have another opportunity then also. So I think we got a couple of, of, you know, fire stops in place to make sure we're, we're comfortable with all of this.
And Mr. Chairman, one more thing. Is it possible the board can specify what specific deliverable from the traffic engineering, engineering handbook would, would satisfy the board for that particular calculation?
And that's a good question. Um, and that's why I was trying to state that it, you know, from the number, I haven't looked at them personally, you know, taking your, your word here, that if it's actually less intense and you're being conservative because of the way your homes, even so, if you say it's the same as the retail, right, that's even more conservative, right? And, you know, so, you know, it, it should be fine. If the board feels they need like a peer review or a statement or something, we can, we can request that. Um, well, you know, we, I mean, I, I don't see any need for this to go to a town designated engineer for any review, Laura. Um, and that's where that would occur, uh, to validate basically what the applicant's saying, you know?
My suggestion would be if the applicant is, you know, able to put into narrative the, um, the licensing situation, if you can also just put in a paragraph there of the work that you just discussed with us on the traffic manual, just put in that. So we really just be looking at a two paragraph narrative on licensing and traffic. Um, and I mean, maybe just for the record, Josh, if you don't mind just writing also in your narrative how the waste is handled, because that way we can just send that to the CAC because that was a question that they had as well. So we can just send your narrative to everybody. So if you just take those three conditions, put them in the narrative and email them to us, we can include those going forward.
Very good. I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. In other words, write it down instead of talking about it. It'll go a long way. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and Josh, please get, you know, I'm glad Laura was able to spec the narrative, but get some feedback from the local store manager there. And, and again, if, if, if we deem it's not an issue, you, if, if CBS deemed it's not an issue, that's fine for now. But, you know, we just want to, you know, you know what our concern is and we're trying to go after.
Understood. Yeah, I, I was just trying to come from the angle that, that was requested regarding the transition engineering handbook. And, um, you, you know, trying to, you know, look into the future regarding this use and trips generated. Um, you know, we, we also didn't, we don't foresee an increase here. Um, and we don't specifically have anything proposed for scope of work for the exterior of this project. And we typically like to avoid that because I, I think everybody can appreciate the, the extra processes that go into, um, the extra scope of work for site work regarding landlord approvals and additional jurisdictional reviews. So if we do have to, to get some kind of wayfinding solution, um, that's going to certainly expand the timeline here.
Right. But, but, but keep in mind, right? You want to make sure that you can generate the business that you want to generate and people are just not going to be annoyed. And, and not use it, right? So I think that's what your balance.
I think we can find that balance.
All right. So everybody's okay with a tentative resolution recommending a positive recommendation that the town board issue a special use permit for his dual use to the next meeting? Everybody okay with that? Anybody opposed?
I have reservations.
Um, and any special basis that you'd like to share?
Yeah, I know the scope of practice for the first practitioners is quite broad. And we could be getting into a lot of services there. Operate with a great deal of independence.
Yeah. You're worried about growth, scope growth, it sounds like?
Yes.
Well, um, again, we'll have the narrative and we'll take that into consideration. And the narrative, as Laura suggested, be very helpful for the town board when they have their public hearing. And we'll hear other people share those concerns at the public
Right. But for completely Chairman Walsh, I mean, Laura and Paul Briggs will talk.
And they'll talk.
Because scope, scope growth, regardless done, regardless of what is done by a new tenant or existing tenant, is something that we've at least lodged as a concern right now, Leslie. So I think, I think we've at least captured it.
Right. Yeah. So planning department has an open item, talk to the attorney, see if there's any special wording we can utilize to help protect the growth. And hopefully that addresses everybody's concerns. Okay? All right. So again, tentative resolution. Anything else? Any comments from the applicant at this point in time?
Not at this time. Thank you to the chairman and the board for their consideration.
Yep. And thank you. And feel free to call. I always say feel free to call Laura because that's easy for me to say. If you have any questions, please reach out to us, okay?
Absolutely. I'll definitely submit that narrative to Laura and again, to the board. And Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll close, uh, Balltown Road CVS for now. All right. And that brings us under discussion to 2538 River Road for Kelts Farm. I know we had significant discussion during the resolution. Uh, do we have anything, Mr. DiRapino, Mr. McPartland, that we need to continue on discussion? Yeah. You know, Mr. Buzoyne is still online or not? I know it's a long meeting. I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
No, Joel here, Kevin, I have two issues.
Hey, Joel, go ahead.
Okay, uh, we had a, um, a meeting at the ends of Windsor Drive with Laura Clark and Patrick and David and Matt and Ray Smith. And item number two, it states that the highway department will put the wing on the new roadway section and review the stormwater system. I'd like to cross out, review the stormwater system and replace that with some more descriptive wording as to what was really agreed to. And that was regrade and blacktop the end of Windsor so that the stormwater flows to the catch basin on Briar Ridge. What, what happens there is that Ray is going to, um, regrade the end of Windsor so the water doesn't flow. Right now, the water flows straight down the stub and into a catch basin at the end of Windsor, and then it dumps onto Kelts Farm. So that, that, uh, that catch basin will no longer be operable. So the water that comes down Windsor has to flow into the catch basin. It's at the end of Briar Ridge. And that catch basin continues under the Windsor stub to Kelts Farm. Ray agreed to regrade the end of Windsor. Um, so that water coming down Windsor will eventually make it onto Kelts Farm.
All right. Well, we've already approved that resolution tonight. So is, I would believe this is something we can handle during, I guess, the pre-construction meeting, Laura, that, you know, because we have the engineering items, the conditions, as I say, we have to address the concerns, you know, it's worked both ways to resolve the issue. Is that a fair statement, Laura?
Yeah, that's fair.
I just don't want the engineering department to have amnesia. You know, I'd like it, I'd like it documented someplace better. I mean, because that was the agreement. And then the next item was number three. Um, the engineering department, previously when they had this fill on, um, on the wind, or on the Kelts Farm property, they had to bypass the existing trunk line. And, uh, they had the equipment, the pump, the piping, and the pneumatic balls that are inflated in the piping to, you know, bypass the flow. So it was agreed that they would provide all of that and their services, not just, you know, give us a pump to bypass the sewer connection. So really, the water and sewer department will work with the developer not to provide a pump. Cross that out. It, it should just read with the developer to bypass the sewer connection at Windsor Drive and at the River Road Crossing. So we have to, to connect in this new fourteen inch super duper trunk line that we're giving the town. We have to make two bypasses. We have to bypass the Windsor and Briar Ridge flow while we connect in the new trunk line. And then downstream, when we connect in the line where it crosses, well, where it enters the manhole where it crosses River Road, we have to bypass the flow across River Road also. You know, because the, the line still is coming down, will be coming down River Road from north to south and then cross the cross into Blatnik. So we have to bypass that flow when we connect in the new trunk line. So that, that was the agreement.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to commit the, the town to the agreement. Uh, we had those discussions. So again, and I don't, again, don't want to oversimplify, but let's, when we have the meeting, let's work that out. Uh, you've got, you're on record, Joel, stating your concerns with those conditions. So let's work those out and hopefully we can work them out, you know, to satisfaction of all parties. And we'll just carry it as an open item and work our way through it. I think that's what we have to do. And if, and if it gets to a point where it can't be worked out and we need to take action, we need to modify the resolution or conditions, well, then that would have to come back to the board. So hopefully we can, we can work it out at the pre-construction meeting or any separate meetings that are required with either the highway department or with water, sewer and engineering to come through it, okay?
You have to remember that this goes all the way back to the beginning that we said that, you know, we're spending $168,000, I said this many times, to put in that 14-inch line. So that was on the condition that the town would, you know, do their part. Okay? So we've done our part. So the town has to do their part and it has to be documented.
So yeah, so to Kevin's point, if we want to change the conditions in the resolutions, I would have to get the engineering and the highway to approve both the conditions. And then we could bring it back as a modified resolution at the next planning board meeting.
That's what I, that's what I would propose.
So one, one option would be for, you know, to have the discussion, Laura, with the, you know, the highway and water and sewer, and see if that, make sure that that was their intention as Joel stated. And if it's not their intention, obviously we need to iron that out. If it is their intention, uh, and if Joel's not comfortable in, in the planning office, or an engineer is not comfortable, we need to modify the conditions to make everybody, um, to state the agreement appropriately, then we'll do that. But let's have the discussion with those departments to see if there's a, a change of position or a miscommunication. Okay? That sound reasonable, Joel?
Yeah.
All right. Other issues? No, thank you, Joel. Any other issues or concerns from the board at this point in time? I mean, again, we have lots of open items still from an engineering standpoint at the SWIP. And, uh, you know, responses to the, to the open items that weren't responded to, to the town designated engineer, another round of feedback from the town designated engineer, town designated engineer. So we need to drive those home in order to, to get there, Joel, along with the Army Corps of Engineers and, uh, and the NOI, as you stated earlier. So you have, there's still some work on your plate too, so.
I think, Kevin, the, the engineering should be done within days. Um, and we've gone back and forth with the TDE. So that really isn't a concern. The concern is the, the time that it'll take the Army Corps to issue their permit and subsequently get the NOI from the DEC. So those are the limiting factors now. It's unfortunate that, you know, there was a misunderstanding between our engineer and our wetlands engineer as to the classification of that perennial stream, you know, the detailed, you know, advanced engineering was considering it just as a drainage feature. And the wetlands engineer said, oh no, that's got to be a perennial stream. So that really should have happened a year ago, not, not at this time.
Thanks, Joel. Any, any questions for Joel or comments regarding the project at this point in time? Hence, like I said earlier, a good reason for having us under discussion to keep tabs on how things are progressing along here.
Sure.
Anything else? Okay, board? Okay, move on?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we'll, we'll move on and we'll, again, we'll work in progress. Uh, let's see. Thanks, everybody, for their patience. Let's see where we at here. We decided we, we're all set with 509 Fillmore. Uh, nothing further there. We discussed 408 Balltown Road, Marises. We're okay there. Nothing further to discuss. 2213 Knot Street, uh, the barber shop, well, we've completed that. Uh, we've got some open items, but we're all set. And then that brings us to 3514 State Street, and that was the Mohawk Army Navy. Again, we're all set and the applicant was not online unless we needed him and we're good there. So that brings us right to 2147 Eastern Parkway So, that brings us right to 2147 Eastern Parkway, the mixed-use development. Mr. DiRapino's the project lead, and Mr. Lisi's online. So, we need, you know, we started to talk about it at the last meeting? And let's see, what's new there, I guess, I hope that's Mr. Lisi.
Yes, we're just waiting for some architectural elevations, what the building's going to look like. I thought I'd had, I thought I would have it this evening, but it's, has not been submitted to me yet, so I think I'll have the elevations for the next meeting.
There was that, and, you know, this planning board mentioned bringing the sidewalks to the property line. I think one of the advisory boards completed streets also.
Yeah.
Noticed that also, so it's just an open item that we were.
Yeah, we agreed to that, and we want to put a center entrance in the front of the building for this, for the front, from the front, so we're ready for that as well.
Yep, and the other, was there something also with the park or the covered parking? Was that going to be moved to the rear also?
Um, I don't recall that, but.
I can't remember. Maybe Dave?
We, we had talked about it. Right now, it's on the right-hand side of the property. If it's designed well and it complements the building, it could be a nice feature that's seen if it's near the street. Otherwise, it could be tucked into the back. I think a lot of it's also going to depend on the program, where you are going to have certain entrances, and if you want tenants to come in on one side and use that parking, or if it seems to be better serviced to be put in the back.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what we talked about, because if the primary entrance is going to be in the back for the tenants, they, you know, you might want the covered parking closer to that entrance. To satisfy those, right?
Right.
So, I mean, we'll leave it to you to, you know, this part, I guess that'd be part of the architectural review, because if, you know, what Dave's saying, if it's how you're going to design and build that, maybe more appropriate in the back versus the side. And the other comment or note I had, and I know this was discussed last meeting, but I lost the bubble, because there's, there's like three different statements in the paperwork that was submitted, I believe, from MJ. So, it's two apartments on the first floor and four and four, is that correct?
Two commercial units in the front, two residential's in the rear, and then four and four.
Four and four, and that's what the EAF states, so.
Correct.
The EAF is correct, okay. Alright, so, Mr. Lisi, so right now, and David, it's, it's a work in progress. You always the next round of information so we can move forward.
Yeah, yeah, I, when I get the elevation, I'll add the, the walkway. And at that point in time, we'll redirect where we're going to put the covered parking spaces.
Right, and think about the design of, you know, the covered parkway along with the elevation.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes, yep.
Is there anything else we can do right now on this?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Alright, yeah, because this is, you know, there's a little work to do ahead of us here, so. And again, I believe this is a special permitted use, Laura, also?
Yeah, because it's a new building, yes.
Yeah, so, I think once we get the, you know, elevations, so that way we can get closer to calling for the town board and making a recommendation, because when you have the elevations, I think that would be important for the public hearing for the community.
Sure, yeah.
I think you would agree with that, right, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, alright, Mr. Lisi, we'll forward from some additional information from you on this one, and we'll close the discussion on, on wherever this is at. It's 447 Eastern Parkway.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you for your time tonight. Okay, and that brings us to 436 Balltown Road, and this is the Burlington store. And Kelvin, are you online with us tonight?
Ah, yes, I am here.
Again, thank you for hanging in there. I know it's been a long meeting tonight. Your effort there. And I believe the ball is with you to tell us that there's been some changes or some modifications.
Ah, yes. So, after last meeting, I actually went and discussed it with, with the client about the skid signs, that that wasn't going to be allowed. They removed that from the drawing, it's not going to happen. They removed it from the scope of work. That's for the, the temporary signage. I believe that was the only concern you guys had. And then, if we move to the permanent signage, they did make the sign smaller. It was, previously, it was 405 square feet, and the new design is 324 square feet. That, that was, I believe, the only concern you guys had, that it was too big, if they could go smaller to what they had previously.
Yeah, we were looking to, you know, minimize the request for the, basically, the waiver required for signage. Understanding that there was previously waivers granted, you know, we didn't want to go too far. The planning office put together a table that kind of summarizes the signage, different sizes of signage throughout the Mohawk Commons. And I kind of was just looking at rough delta numbers earlier, and it, you know, looks like, you know, Lowe's has quite a few signs, if you, you know, you add up all the square footage of the signs, you know, that's, it's pretty significant for Lowe's. And I believe, where am I? For your request, it was going to start to grow also with the original request, that we're just looking to, you know, and obviously Lowe's has got quite a bit of frontage there, you know? This is where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond used to be, right?
Yes, that's, that's, that's the spot.
Right, and the other thing was the stake signs. I don't believe we have a project lead assigned to this one, right, guys? My notes are in disarray here. Yeah, I don't think we do. So, the other thing was what they're doing, I think there was a request for eight of the stake signs. And we also had some concerns about how long they hold up and how they look and so on and so forth. And I know the planning office, I believe, in the agenda statement stated that, you know, they're okay with some stake signs, but maybe it's too many. And maybe if we could get that down to maybe four at strategic locations, you know, just to minimize, again, the request. So, it would be helpful.
So, it would be four, four stake signs or four, four locations that you're referring to?
Uh, it's four stake signs. I assume that each stake sign was going to be at a different location?
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
And the other open item we had was, and I think this was for planning office, and I don't know if they had an opportunity, was to take a look at the design standards to see if the requests from the applicant for the colors to be utilized on the facade of the store were allowed by the design standards in the mall. I don't know if they've had an opportunity to do that or not. That would be for planning offices.
Okay, yeah, that, that, the facade, I did run it through the client. That's, that's a totally different department from what we do. And I've never got an answer from them in regards to the red, if they went and discuss it with the GC, because that falls into the GC. And not, not Burlington, to the sign side of the project. So, I didn't, I get a clear clarification from them on the red at all.
Yeah, but we understand the red would be their corporate, corporate color or whatever. So, the question was really for the planning office, whether we had to worry about a waiver from the design standards. So, I don't know if Laura and Clark had a chance to look at the design standards to validate the colors were acceptable or not by code.
Well, my apologies. We didn't actually put that in the agenda statement, but based on what we had to do for Target, when they put their column to red, I do believe that that would be an additional waiver that we'd have to add on to there. So, I would have the planning board expect that it would need a waiver for the color, because I think that the colors that are specked out in the shopping center commercial are earth tones.
Okay, and again, we know that's a corporate identity thing, and we've been flexible in the past regarding corporate identity, you know, change the color. But again, it's a board decision. Alright, so you're reducing the request for the variance on the front sign, I believe we were at, and somebody can help you. I don't know if the planning department had an opportunity to latest submitted, was that in the packet, or is this all no?
It was, so the new submitted was just in that email, because Kelvin called me today and resubmitted. So, but yeah, I didn't realize that the facade sign had been changed to like the 324 is much more in keeping with like what Target has granted to them.
Yeah, so, and what, what we had discussed with the client to minimize the size was to make the, the sign to fit inside the two columns or pillars that were visible on the, on the old design that Bed, uh, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond had, which was the sign inside that, inside that area.
Yeah, because the other one, this is the new submitted here, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because the other one, extended beyond, right? It kind of filled up the whole, the whole red, right?
Yep.
Alright. And of course, there is the logo, which was an additional facade sign, considered an additional sign. And the size of the, the lettering on the logo exceeded the requirement, so there's, you know, I would say several, at least a few different waivers that we have to be prepared to act on. Alright, so, what's your timetable like? Do we have time for, to have the planning office, you know, summarize the waivers to the board? Or, you know, what's, what's your, what's your schedule look like, Mr. Herrera?
So, so they're, they're really trying to push it like, the sooner is the better, because they are planning on doing, like putting the, the, the coming soon signs and have at least the sign at the same time, so it, it works like, you know, when they put, if, I'm not sure exactly when the facade is going to be ready, and because of the color that has to be approved yet, but let's say it gets approved and they have it ready within like the month. They would like to have the sign installed within the same week that it's finished. And that would start the timeline of the temporary signage, which is the coming soon. And then, it would, it would eventually continue until the opening days.
Alright, so what's the reduction in the size again? First, I think the last submitted we were at needed a 209 square foot variance for the sign, and now it was reduced by how much, Kelvin?
So, it was reduced by eighty, eighty little, give me a second, I have the math right here.
And I apologize, it's just, you know, it was late information, so the board, I know they had an opportunity to take a look at it.
Yeah, so it was eighty-one, eighty-one square feet that was reduced.
So, we're looking at a new variance request of 128, which is versus the 209, which is on top of already waivers or variances that were granted, you know? So, at this point, I guess I'd like to see what the board thinks, because what we're looking at here is, you know, the, again, we appreciate you going back to the applicant and reducing the size. But we, the board needs to be okay with, A, the color, that extra logo sign that's on the facade, and the, at least four of the stake signs that we talked about at whatever locations, you know, the applicant feels it's the most, most relevant, I guess. Any feedback from the board regarding this application? Anybody have any concerns? I mean, I'm glad to hear that they reduced the size, because that was, we always try to, you know, push back a little bit, try to get the size down and get it compliant as, 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 as much as possible, so I appreciate that. So, my view, if there's no comments, is that we could have, you know, the planning board draft a tentative resolution for the next meeting that summarizes the latest sizes for of the stake signs. And, you know, review the design standards and whether or not we need a waiver to allow the red facade or the tam or any combination of those. Because it doesn't comply with the design standards. Again, knowing that we had to deviate for other businesses because it was a corporate identification. If that's the case, we could at least have a tentative resolution for the next meeting and get it out to take a look at it. And if there's any concerns, we can always table it, but that way we'd be prepared for the next meeting, and we could help the applicant move this along.
Okay.
Again, it's up to the board, though. Are you okay with that, everyone? Anybody concerned? Okay, if you're concerned or have a problem, I'm just trying to, you know, make a suggestion. Okay, hearing no concerns, and I'm going to ask the planning office then to draft a resolution and share that with the applicant. You know, with those things we just talked about, color, size, for, for stake signs, as recommended by the planning office. The locations of those four stake signs would be nice if you had to choose four, Kelvin, you know, state where you'd like those. And, and we can see if we can get this done in two weeks from now at the next meeting, which is what, 24th, so it is?
Yeah. The one thing I wanted to check, because Clark and I just kind of guesstimated this, was we put the maximum that the temporary signage could only be up for nine months.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, as per the timeline they provided, it's ninety, sorry, it's twelve weeks per stage. Or, or ninety days per stage, depending on when the facade is ready and when they're going to be opening. So, so that, that, that does equal to the, to the nine, nine months that you mentioned.
Okay, haha, we arrived in the same thing fortuitously.
Any comments from the board, planning office, applicant?
Yeah, I have a question just regarding construction and timeline. With extremely rising material costs, is Burlington committed to starting this project as soon as they get an approval?
Yeah.
Do they have any concerns?
Yeah, they are, they are basically ready to go. And I believe what they do, I'm not 100% sure, because I don't work directly with the GCs. But I've, I've done, what, like twelve in the past two months? And what I believe they do is they just bought a bulk of materials for all their stores with, with time. I believe that, that's what their plan was.
Yeah, and that's a good point, David. Laura, this is, it's retail to retail, so there's no tenant change, is that correct? It's strictly just signage?
I know we've been doing a lot lately, but, but we actually approved the tenant change not that long ago.
Okay.
Yes, so they're good on tenant change. They have their building permit. They came through you guys. It was an easy approval, because it was retail to retail, it was one meeting. And they, they have their building permits issued, so they're working away in there. This is just for the signage. They weren't, they didn't have their signed package ready at the time that they did their tenant change.
Great, thanks, Laura. Starting to lose it here. Okay, anything further on this? Are you all set, Mr. Herrera, on what we need from you?
Uh, yes. Yep, I have, I have all the info.
Okay, okay, great, and we should be able to get there next meeting.
Okay.
Alright, any questions? Alright, hearing none, we'll move forward, okay? Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, alright, that brings us to One Research Circle, site plan application, special use permit for antenna on the water tower.
Yeah, and Chairman Walsh, I'll be recusing myself from this one.
Right, so Mr. Collins is going to recuse himself from any action regarding General Electric at One Research Circle. And Ms. Gold will sit on the board to take his seats during this whole process of this antenna application, okay? We get a little feedback from somebody, I'm not sure, maybe to, be mindful of that, we might have sounds like maybe somebody's got a phone and a computer on at the same time potentially or something. Alright, so we have the application here, and we have representative, or at least one, I'm sure, for the application. Okay, application, so who would like to at least brief us on the application? We did receive the information in our packet, but who would like to summarize it?
Hi, my name is Allison Phillips. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Verizon Wireless. I'm with the law firm Young Summer, filling in for Dave Brennan tonight. We also, thank you. We also have here with us tonight Sarah Coleman with Aerosmith Development, Verizon's site selection consultant. And also Rick Andreas, Verizon RF engineer, on hand tonight in case the board has any questions about our application materials. If I could give the board just a brief overview of the application, it is for a wireless telecommunications facility that would be mounted on the existing water tower located at One Research Circle. That's at the intersection of County Route 19 and Van Antwerp Road, County Route 21. The facility consists of an assemblage of fourteen wireless antennas actually located at two different elevations on the support legs of the water tower. One set of arrays at seventy feet, and one set of arrays at 160 feet centerline. And the overall tower height is 207 feet. We've demonstrated in the application materials that this facility is needed at. We've demonstrated in the application materials that this facility is needed at this location due to significant gaps in coverage in this area. That's the eastern area of the town of Niskiuna, the northeastern portion of the town and into the western portion of, of Clifton Park. These gaps in coverage exist due to various factors, primarily heavy customer usage that we're experiencing right now, but also dense vegetation and widely varying terrain between the target area and the existing macro facilities that provide service to this location, which are located approximately one point seven miles away. So because of the need for, for enhanced, to fill the gaps in coverage, but also increase the bandwidth at this location, we are proposing this facility. We have located it on existing water tower, which is consistent with the hierarchy reflected in the town zoning law, which has a preference for, for locating these facilities on existing structures. And this particular structure is actually ideally located, it's located, you know, near River Road, New York State, one forty-six, actually on an elevated ridge line, which gives us the height that we need in order to have the direct line of sight to the areas of the town that we need to provide the service at. So I'll, I'll refer the board to our application materials with that. We have some visual simulations and also additional information about our FCC compliance and additional supporting information about the need for the facility at this location. But if the board has any questions or would like us to provide any additional information, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, well, thank you, Ms. Phillips, and thank you to everyone for this bearing with us tonight. We have a long meeting, so I appreciate your time. The board does have some experience, worked with Mr. Brennan before on the lead the latest Verizon tower down on WTRY Road. So we have some experience there. And obviously, we're glad to see that co-location is possible to fill the gap in coverage because that makes everyone's job easier, especially at this location based on the visuals provided. It seems to be, I guess, in my view, my view, fun. It appears to be not too intense and should work out okay from what I see at least. How far, you know, as far as the coverage, I know it looks like we're going to try to improve over in Rexford on the other side of the river too from this location. Yeah, I know there's, there's some gaps in coverage over because I have some friends actually right over in that area. And, and it's been difficult. We've had a lot of dropped calls. Like, I guess the drop call is a result of either intensity of use or poor coverage. I know it's occurring based on my location also, because I live right up the street basically. So, so we know it's there. This, this process is going to require, again, a recommendation from this board to the town board. And it's going to require a couple of public hearings, one by this board and also by the town board in order to issue the special use permit to allow this to go forward. I was looking at the visuals from Bryan Drive across the river. And I guess, you know, if, if the, the cables are run on the, I guess it would be the south side, maybe, depending on the exact location there. It looks like even the cables wouldn't be visible because they'll be running up one of the legs of the water tower. But it seemed to be pretty reasonable, at least from my first cut. But I will gladly open it to the board for any questions concerns that they may have regarding this application.
You know, I, I apologize, maybe just a late hour. Is there actually a, a tower that's coming, that's going to be additionally on the water tower? Or what's going to be put on the water tower? I mean, I know it's antenna, but where on the water towers are going to be?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. The antennas are actually going to be mounted on the support legs of the water tower at two different elevations. So you will have a set of antennas at the seventy-foot elevation center line and then additional antennas at a hundred and sixty feet center line, but both mounted onto the, the support legs of the water tower. So below the, the water drum.
So they're actually not even, I mean, so it's not going to be above the drum in any way? That, that's why I was like, I couldn't even, I couldn't even see it based upon the, based upon the photo.
That's right. They're, they're going to be affixed to the support legs of, of the drum. And it is because, you know, with the position of that existing water tower on this already high elevation, we're able to get the height that we need in the direct line of sight without having to go any higher than the support legs.
What happens to, like, I'm sorry, I was trying to find all the paperwork there fumbling around, but it's, the, the company is, is, it's not owned by Verizon, but it's a company that basically establishes the lease agreement and the hardware or whatever, and leases it to Verizon. Is that, is that a correct statement? It's, it, in other words, let me phrase it a different way. Can other cell towers, other cell companies also put their antenna on this tower? They restricted from utilizing it?
Sarah, I don't know if you are able to answer that question. I don't know that there's any additional opportunities to co-locate on the facilities that, that we'd be installing here. But I could follow up on that if Sarah doesn't have the answer and, and get back to the board on that.
Yeah. And again, I don't know if there's any holes in coverage for, you know, AT&amp;T or any of the other companies. But if, if there was and they were looking to put a antenna in this general vicinity, would they be able to benefit from this, I guess is the question? So that we can, again, promote co-location and not any, have any additional cell towers throughout the community, you know? So if you could check on that, it'd be nice to know.
I can definitely do that.
Questions from the board? Anything?
This may have been provided in the documents that just were not selectively omitted from the agenda packet. Thinking maybe it was the propagation plot and radio frequency analysis. Generally, I'm just curious, what's the intended radius of service for this installation?
I think in general, and, and Rick, our RF engineer is online and he can add to this. I think in general the intent is to improve coverage along, it's about a one and a half mile stretch of River Road north of the Mohawk River and the Holmes Hood side streets in that area, but then also extending to Blatnik Park, Mohawk River Street Park, the Niskiuna Soccer, Soccer Park, the Mohawk Hudson Bike Way, North Atomic Power Lab, and then the GE Global Research and Renewable Energy Facilities.
With respect to maintaining the access easement, will the, will the tenant have any responsibilities within, within the GE property?
We will be leasing space both on the ground for our equipment, but also a twenty-foot wide access easement over the existing driveway to access the facility. And then we will be doing maintenance on, on the actual antenna arrays. And that's expected to be approximately, I think, one to three visits per week is in the application materials. So it is an unmanned facility, really, you know, limited maintenance needs, but we will have access to the facility pursuant to our lease with GE. And I actually, I am getting a, a message from Sarah. Unfortunately, her microphone's not working, but just on the prior question we had about the opportunities for future co-location. It is our understanding that there will be opportunities to add antennas to this tank in the future, just provided that they don't interfere with the line of sight and objectives for the, for the Verizon facilities we're proposing right now.
Thank you. You know, the, you know, since we went through the application down on WTRY Road, it was, you know, obviously a bit different because it was a new location, a new tower, you know, borders, you know, basically residential community. There was concerns, you know, from the residents in the area. So it was, I don't, I guess it was a little bit more of, the review was a little bit more intense, you know, based on, based on that. And so we got focused really into the need and the gaps in coverage down there to make sure it was really warranted, you know? And obviously, you know, that was passed and went through and that, that tower is installed. So one of the things I probably would ask is that the planning office to pull up that resolution from WTRY Road so we can look for any of the conditions that may be applicable to this location. I think we talked about end of life of the facility, about whether or not there need to be any, what happened, making own responsibilities to make sure the sites cleaned up, things along those lines. Now, those may not apply here because it's, you know, GE and it's embedded in this location, so they may not be applicable. But I just would recommend that at least we review that resolution and the conditions associated with that past resolution to see if any of those apply to this location, all right? That's, I guess, an open item for the planning office to get that out to the planning board members. I'm sure Mr. Brennan probably has a copy of that also in your, your office, so you, you know what those are probably pretty quickly also. But again, positive thing here is co-location. I don't know if we need to, and I believe at the other tower, because of the concerns with the location, I think we had a consultant possibly even look at to validate that there really was a concern. An RF engineer possibly to make sure that, you know, make sure, but just to validate as a peer review that there really truly was a need and obviously there was. And I don't know if we need to do that in this location. It may not be required based on the co-location and on the location itself. So, but that's some things that we might need to consider. And was there any thoughts from anybody on that at all, or? Is, is it not a concern here?
No, I mean, I think, you know, obviously, the, the fact that, you know, there was, there were things to look to for last time, I think, could be instructive. But, I mean, the fact that it's not in itself visible is obviously a major plus. I mean, I don't know if there's any issue about the fact of where it's located. And I don't even know if it's appropriate even ask the question about, you know, everything that GE does and whatever radioactivity comes from out of this by where GE is, if there's any way, there's any, again, I don't even know if that's applicable for us to even ask that question. But it is just, you know, and I suspect that the, those who are doing this would probably be aware of any scientific information. It's just, it's just kind of an interesting spot by where a lot of experiments are taking place.
Right. So impact on the global research itself by placing it there, obviously. The assumption is that there's no impact, otherwise they would be concerned with this application, I would assume, right?
Yeah.
Yep. And again, I wouldn't expect the applicant or Verizon to be investing if there wasn't a hole in coverage and wanting to put an antenna. So by default at this location, I'm assuming that there obviously is a need because nobody's going to want to spend the money if there's no need. So. What does the board think? Is this, is this one that is straightforward enough that we should start the process and, and call for a public hearing? Hear what's out there? To, you know, to, to see? Is that something, Laura, you think that we could do, or? Because again, once we have the public hearing, there might be something that comes up from either residents or employees or somebody about concerns. And then we need to make a recommendation to the town board. So the better, the quicker we hear something that we're missing, the better for all of us. And then we can utilize that information, either feedback to the applicant or to put it in a condition to the town board as part of a recommendation. Does anybody have any concerns with moving forward with a, a public hearing on this already? You know, no, I don't have a concern.
Yeah, I was, I was just checking the code. It needs a special use permit the first time the structure has antennas added to it. And it doesn't look like this one ever had antennas that were approved by the town before. So it does definitely need a special use permit. But after that, like if AT&amp;T was going to put antennas underneath these ones, then it would just be site plan approval.
All right. And is there any comments from the applicant and the board? Or let's, you know, let's call, Laura, are you able to get the notice and, and have a public hearing at our next meeting on this?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can hold a public hearing if you guys are interested in doing that.
The applicant's okay with that, I assume? Yep. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, I don't see any reason, like I said, because there's not, you know, it's a little bit unique here and and if there's something we're missing, I'm sure that, you know, the public will help us out and let us know what we're missing. So that's the board. Anybody opposed to having the public hearing next meeting? Okay. So you know, we oppose and we'll, we'll have a resolution calling for a public hearing at the next meeting. I guess that's the way it works. You can't have the public hearing without the resolution calling for it. Is that correct, Laura?
I would double check, but the only time you have to do a resolution calling for a public hearing is if it's a, if you have to do the secret determination before you call for it. And I believe the only time we ever do that is for subdivision because we're required to by New York State law. It's a gray area on the special use permits in the site plans. So we don't do it because we really feel like it's good to have the public hearing upfront, prior to deciding that everything is complete in the application. So I, you guys could just verbally call for a public hearing if you want to, I believe.
All right. Let's do that. That'll save two weeks of the process, basically, right? At least two, three weeks, yeah. All right. So I guess the board's okay, Ms. Phillips, with having a public hearing at the next meeting. And we'll ask you to, you or your engineer to give a brief overview of the project at public hearing and listen to what everybody has to say and utilize that information in our recommendation to the town board. Okay?
That's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And thanks again for hanging in there tonight. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to four twenty-eight Balltown Road. And that's the Target store. I'm not sure if we have an applicant that could stick with us this long. If not, we understand it. And if we do, great.
Yes, I'm on.
Okay. And that's, is it?
Darlene, yeah, Darlene Festa Mocker with image one.
Okay. All right. We did receive the information regarding, you know, the laydown area, basically. So the modification of the site plan to allow for the, the project at the Target store. We're glad that, you know, obviously you're doing improvements there. And Laura reminded us in the agenda statement that we've done something similar in the past. So maybe you can at least brief us on what you're looking for here and what the plan is. How's that?
Okay. We are looking to do a staging area of approximately thirty-six thousand square feet. The staging area will be fenced in with the drive-through lanes, as you can see where the arrows are, will be gates, which will have locks on them whenever it's not in use. Image one will provide a flag person to direct the traffic in and out of the units. It'll probably have about between thirty-five and fifty containers. It'll have a trailer for an office, area for equipment. And I believe that's about all.
Did you talk, talk to us about how the store is going to operate during this period? Is it the store being shut down? Is it being downsized? What's the, the plan for the retail space?
I believe it'll be still operating. Okay. Peter's on. Peter, do you, how does the store operate during this time? He's our project manager.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. The store will be operational, though there will be a complete temp wall erected. Most of the work will be at night after hours when the store is closed.
Okay. And this is something that, it's basically an interior remodel of what's?
Yeah, we'll be adding a new interior Alta Beauty Store inside the Target.
Okay. And we have an Alta Beauty Store? Is that still, you know, I'm sorry, because I'm not, but we have a store, right, Niskiuna? It's being, in Alta, is that being consolidated?
Yeah, there, there is a store in Mohawk Commons, right?
So the question is, are they being consolidated into the Target store? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I believe it'll be a consolidation, but I cannot confirm that exactly what the plan.
Actually, I just thought it was an interior. I just thought it was an interior remodel, and obviously it's an interior remodel with a, um, Laura, does that trigger any, uh, different reviews, uh, based on that information? Like, uh, uh, I mean, they're both retail, uh, but does that require, uh, any other additional site, site plan concerns to address besides, uh, the, uh, the site plan for the construction? To allow for the construction to occur?
Um, Peter, it may be good just to send a floor plan so that we can see how much it changes, but typically, no. Like, we haven't, because it's retail to retail, like, when, you know, um, there's like a CVS pharmacy in Target that was, okay. There's, I think there used to be like a, something else, and then they switched it over to Starbucks. Those things in the shopping center commercial district, it's not, it doesn't need a special use permit the way that things do in the town center overlay district.
Laura, the, the Target team will be doing the presentation for the remodel for the building, the town building permits and, and whatnot. We're just doing the staging for the outside. So they will send complete drawings over within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so we have time. Sorry, Laura, so we have time to receive some more information. Uh, uh, are, are we looking to do, uh, uh, site plan modification to allow this to go forward independent of, of what you're talking about, ju- just for the staging area? What, what are we looking to do here, uh, at this point in time? I'm not, I'm not sure that, who, who can answer that question. Laura, what your, uh, assumption was here?
Um, yeah, so I just, like, I mean, I was actually just thinking it was updating the aisles. But, um, that's why I would like to see the site plan, just to make sure that I'm not missing something, you know? But, you know, it's probably generally speaking, okay, but I would say to the planning board that I wouldn't recommend approval of the staging area until at least we conceptually saw what the interior remodel is, if we can have that, um, in a reasonable timeframe. I can compare this to what we approved last time, but I believe it may even be the same. Because I, do you remember last time we were looking at it? We had him shifted down so it was away from the main entrance, um, but not in front of Party City. So I can double check that this is the same. But, um, during that time when Target was doing the, the remodel for the Starbucks, um, and the bathrooms, we didn't, we didn't, so it, it did work just fine. And I know that during that remodel, they even had to put bathrooms outside of Target for a little while. They had temporary bathroom, very nice, apparently temporary ba- bathrooms on the outside of Target, so. Um, but I can double check that this is very similar to what we approved before, but we need to know timeframe, and we need to know what the interior remodel would look like.
And Laura, are, is there anything, um, in that area that, that would not, not frowned upon, but to have a duplicate business in the event that the Alta freestanding store is not going to be closed?
Um, those are actually private agreements. Um, it's possible. Although I would think that Target probably would have looked into that already. Like, there are, there are private agreements with landlords that say, if I'm going to go in here, like, for instance, we ran into this with Smash Burger. Starbucks has a milkshake clause in its lease. Nowhere else around can sell its milkshakes. So like, when Smash Burger went in, and this is unrelated to planning board approval, but they had to negotiate and pay Starbucks to be able to sell milkshakes in that. But that's all private among the way that they do their leases. So Alta would have to have like a, you can't have another Alta within twenty feet of me clause in its lease agreement.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. And as Laura mentioned, so your timetable is, you know, obviously, we like to do our best to support everyone. So, uh, you know, if you get that information in, uh, we'll, you know, put it down for discussion again at the next meeting, and then maybe we'll be closer along to call for an action the following meeting. Is that, is that where your head was at? Is that what you're thinking? So I mean, that puts it basically, we're looking at four weeks out, uh, for probably any type of, uh, of, of resolution approving anything.
Well, we have, I mean, the projected start date and the timeframe of the project, I don't know if that helps. And again, they said there was no exterior renovation or any updating to the building or the setup inside.
All right, so, so if it's four weeks out for a, a resolution, does that support your, uh, timetable of, of when you're thinking to start? We, you know, we try to do our best, you know, to help too. Um, uh, but if you're saying, you know, you want to start in two weeks, uh, it could be a little tough.
Well, we, no, I think four weeks would be just about the potential start date to set up the staging area and get the product coming in. But I know, obviously, we wouldn't break that, break, break project ground until at least July. And when I say project ground, start inside, there's really no groundbreaking.
All right, so I suggest you get everything you can into the planning office, the details that we need. And then the next meeting, we'll have those out to the board members. And any questions or concerns about the laydown area or the, the, uh, deviation in the retails, retail to retail, but if there's any concerns, we can address all that and be prepared to call for a resolution, you know, to help us along within a reasonable timeframe. So if you can get in what, whatever you have, uh, planning office, sooner the better, okay? We can help you out.
Okay.
The point that Ul- Ulta is, uh, you know, moving in there, I mean, obviously, again, it's, uh, not the concern from a, a, a planning standpoint for this resolution or this process. I mean, it's a bigger concern if they're closing the one because there might be, uh, a vacant square footage in a retail spot that, you know, the town, you know, doesn't like to have, obviously. So, so that's a, you know, it's an additional concern, but, um, um, that, you know, we're, we're curious, I'm sure, about, you know, where that leads, whether there's another tenant lined up if Ulta is closing or they're opening a satellite location, those kinds of details. Do you, do you have anything, any information on that at all?
Um, how far are they up here, do you know?
Uh, walking across the parking lot, pretty much. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, walking distance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's concerning, you know, again, with vacant, if they are closing one and moving, consolidating, you know, we'd like to, you know, understand that because we like to, you know, maybe talk to the landlord or, you know, promote that, uh, there's going to be square footage available, anything we can do to keep that, uh, retail space filled would be a positive thing for the town, of course, right?
You know, Mr. Chairman, it stands to reason that, that, that the commercial lease would require consent of a landlord for another use on the Ulta, which means, I, I would, I would, it stands to reason that they're, they've consented to the relocation of Ulta, and maybe they're going to backfill the Ulta space, but we need to find out, right?
Yeah, it'd be nice to know, yep.
And I know we gave the form, uh, Target has given the form to the landlord for approval of the staging. So I'm sure they're working with them as well, and I'll, I'll look into that, um, to get information on the existing Ulta.
Yeah, thank you. It'd be, I'm sure the town would be, uh, would like to know to the town board members, and, you know, obviously, the residents of the town like to understand what's going on there. Uh, it's an important, uh, uh, Mohawk Commons is important to the community, and, uh, we wanted to see it be successful and vibrant and, uh, looking good. So any help you can give us, we'd appreciate it.
Definitely.
Last question, how long do you envision having that staging area?
Approximately four months.
Okay, and then question to Laura, really, are we envisioning anything similar for Burlington?
Uh, you know, Burlington has been under construction for a while, and I do not believe that they have a similar staging area.
Yeah, probably part of the difference is Burlington is empty, right? And they're re, repurposing it or whatever, whereas Target's going to be, uh, active business while they're doing the work. Probably is a, probably a big difference there, right?
That's usually the case. We would do direct deliveries in a new store or a ground-up store, or, uh, if something is shut down, as opposed to the staging area outside.
Okay. Any questions from the board or requests from the applicant or thoughts? All right, sounds like, uh, the applicant gave us some more information. We'll put you down on the agenda for the May twenty-fourth meeting to, uh, discuss what you have submitted and see where we stand to, to help move the process along.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, and thank you again for your patience tonight, so long may, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it for discussion item board. Roger that. All right, so, uh, we have some reports tonight, and I think we can move this along pretty quickly here. It's been one, one of those good meetings, uh, Knott Street. Laura, you want to quickly summarize? Uh, I know you probably had a chance to work on it because we're a little bit busy right now.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to have it to this meeting, and I didn't want to take it off the agenda, but I don't have a summary of the comments yet.
And I know, yeah, you know, there's a lot going on right now, so work in progress, and we'll look forward to when you get the summary, to reviewing that information in one of the future packets, okay, Laura? And the COVID-nineteen update?
Um, just quickly, our next meeting's definitely going to be virtual, so we called for those public hearings. We'll definitely hold those virtually. Um, but the plan is that we would start meeting again in person in June. So potentially, our first meeting in June may be in person, we'll see, we'll see.
That'd be a shocker, get to see everybody live, wow. So, yeah, so looking at June, and we'll, you know, ob- obviously update that the next meeting, and we'll watch the town board to see how, uh, how they're progressing along so we can follow suit, right?
Yeah, and if you guys are thinking about meeting in person again and you need any special accommodations, just email me, we'll set anything up that you need.
Yep. Mr. Scraby Tennis, did you have something? Okay, see your hand raised there, I was just checking, okay. Um, all right, COVID-nineteen update, June. And then, uh, tonight, uh, the historic preservation, a draft of the code that was provided by Dr. Brennan was included in the packet, and again, I'd like to thank him for his help here. David, I believe you, uh, I think it was last meeting you, um, agreed to help out with this or at least be project lead on this one, if we, from the planning board standpoint, is that true?
Yeah, yes, definitely. If you need a project lead, I'd be more than happy to, uh, to take a look at this. I, I did look at it over the weekend, but I'd like a little more time with it. And then to set up a time to talk with, uh, Dr. Brennan.
Yep.
But it's a, it's a good start.
Yeah, thanks, David, and I agree with you. I, I did get a chance to read it over. I got a few minor comments that I, I saw. The thing that I need help with, and maybe David, you could provide this, is that, um, and, and it may be legal department or anybody, you know, we all should take a look at, of course. Is that anything that we can put in there that helps our position on any future subdivisions of protecting? Anything that we legally can do, you know, to give us a more, uh, I don't want to say power, authority, whatever you want, word you want to use, uh, it's important that we keep that in there. Uh, we try to get that in there if we can. But it's a good first cut, and again, I appreciate, uh, Dr. Brennan's time for doing this. And, uh, let's all please take a look at it and help support him, uh, to get this through, okay? Because I believe, Laura, we would, uh, the planning department or planning board would take the comments, and then we would pass it on to the town board, and they would take a look at it also. So, uh, I guess we're acting as an advisory, uh, in, in this capacity, right?
Yeah, that's correct. It depends exactly on how we add an entire code on what the process is, but we should definitely be the advisory agency on it.
Yeah, so I know there's a lot, so please take a look at it. You have any comments? You can please, uh, we can filter them through, uh, Laura or Clark, and then we'll, uh, update it so you can get a, a good draft on to, to move it forward, okay? I appreciate everybody's time on that. All right, anything else, Laura, on the reports?
I have nothing.
Okay, and I'm going to just, I'm going to ask if anybody has anything tonight, because it's a long night. Anybody have anything they'd like to ask or any statements they'd like to make tonight under commission business? Again, I'll just thank everybody for a long night, thank the planning office for all their hard work. Uh, have a motion to adjourn then?
Motion?
Motion adjourned by Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Wapam, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Not opposed, so we'll adjourn the meeting at ten forty-six PM. Thank you, everybody, for, uh, a long night, I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.